Let's do this, let's go about, I want to talk about your teaching career. And I know that the Senator, if I remember correctly in the book, at one point you were pursuing a nursing career and you wanted to be a teacher, and I know you all had conversations about that, you want to?
Oh, yes. As a teenager, my first job, I was sixteen years old, and I worked at the hospital on weekends and during the summers.
You were the first African-American aide there.
Yeah, nursing assistant.
Tell everybody, I think it's important as you talk about these first.
And I had worked there for three years, and I developed this interest in nursing. In fact, one of the supervisors that I had there, she was a person known to be difficult to get along with, but she liked me very much, and she really wanted me to come there to that hospital. Had I been able to get in, my total life would have been different, I'm sure. But at that time, I had to go to the city, the Philadelphia or New York, to get training as a nurse. They did not accept black students at that time. And I was there at the hospital, I was in training at Harlem Hospital, and I became a little dissatisfied with the training, and I changed my mind because my second interest was in education. So when I went home during the holidays, I talked to my mother about it, and I said, "I think I'd like to go into college," that was my second interest. And she said, "Well, whatever makes you happy." So then I left the hospital that next term, and I took a job working in a department store downtown, was called Jane Engels at the time, very exclusive dress shop, until I could get in college. Meantime, I took two classes at NYU to sort of get an early start, and I later had those transferred to South Carolina State. And then I left in August to go to South Carolina State. I didn't know anyone at the college. It was through the recommendation of my father after he had asked me whether I want to go. I really didn't know at that time because I hadn't been concentrating on going to college. And so he said, "Well, where would you think you would like to go?" And I didn't really want to stay in New York. I was a girl from a small town, and I just didn't, it was nice to visit the big city, but I didn't really want to live there. So then he even mentioned the college in South Carolina, what a great school it was, and it turned out to be just what he explained to me. I developed many friends there, and also I met my husband.
Julius.
Right. And at that time, we had not talked about my relationship as far as my father was, because I only talked about my parents in Pennsylvania, the ones I'd grown up with.
How did he react to that?
Well, he had known about it, but he, I never brought the subject up, so he never brought it up until one day, one of his friends in Orangeburg had said, "I see that you married the governor's daughter," and he was making a joke of it, and he wished he had some of the money. And he came on later, he told me what Robert had said. And that's the time we sat down and actually started to talk about it.
Now tell us, Julius, his politics was very different than your father's.
He did not like my father's politics, of course. No black person did at that time in South Carolina, because even though when he went in as governor, they had high hopes he would be different because he had done things in helping people in the black community, and I felt that this, he was on the right road until he decided to run for president in nineteen forty-eight on the Dixiecrat ticket, because he didn't like Truman. And then his image sort of changed. That's when I started to see him as a segregationist and a racist.
Now, how old were you at that point, when you started to see him as a segregationist?
I was about, let's see, twenty-two.
So you met him at sixteen, and at twenty-two is when you really?
Was when I began to, because of the things he was saying, and we had many conversations about that, and I wanted to know why did he have to say those things? Why can't you say more positive things? And he told me, "Well, in the South, the races were always separate," and this was his philosophy. He did not start that. There wasn't too much he as an individual could do. And I said, "Yes, but you could have a positive influence instead of a negative one." And of course, the more we talked about this...
Now, you had this conversation with him at what age? This is from twenty-two, really?
This is when I, yes. We talked about it off and on, and in fact, I was quite upset with him, it's in the book there later in the book, because whatever he'd say, I'd listen, and I didn't protest too much. But at this one conversation we had, I did start to question him and said things to his surprise that I had never said before.
So the older you got, the more comfortable and confident you became.
Right. And at some point, I didn't, I was sort of peeved with him at the time, but then I understood as a politician, after I knew more about politics, why he took the stand that he did, because after all, he was representing his constituents, because at that time, black people couldn't even vote in the earlier years. But then, when things did change after the passage of the Civil Rights, he, to me...
Act of nineteen sixty-four.
...started to portray himself as a different person, which was the sort of person I had known. And then I began to feel proud of him because I didn't before that. I didn't want people to even know he was my father.
So after the passage of the Civil Rights Act in sixty-four, your relationship really began to change even more, as you began to accept his politics more.
Exactly. And he was able to speak out more, I think, about the type of person he really was, because I didn't feel that racist image that he had was anything positive, and it just didn't seem like he was that way to me, because I knew the total person.
But you never stopped trying. I mean, all of your conversations, even if you were disappointed with him.
Oh, yes, I did.
I'm trying to figure, how did you reconcile it? It had to tear at you because this is your father, you knew him in private moments as you talked throughout the book, and it seemed that the way you were able to get over kind of the public persona of Strom Thurmond was that you knew the private man.
Yes.
And you knew him to be, as you said, when he became governor, you thought that perhaps he would chart a new path, or chart a new course, and it was a period of time you were very disappointed, but you kept trying and kept trying, and I've heard you say in other interviews that you believe firmly, and I have to agree with you, that your efforts yielded a significant change as he, throughout the course of his political career, began to evolve. And I know some people still remember him in a fixed way. He certainly evolved over a period of time.
Well, I would like to think, and I think perhaps over a period of time, he did think about these things, and then later, he was able to do more about it than he did previously.
The cows, Gusty Renegade, in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy today's day, Thursday, April seven, two thousand twenty-two. So I have been told this is our fourth study session on Essie Mae Washington Williams, Dear Senator. Now, we're picking up in chapter four, basically where we are in the chronology. Last week, she told us about meeting Strom Thurmond. This is for the second time in her life. She's almost eighteen years old, seen him for all of two dose times, and this is after some years have passed from the first time that she meets him. His blue eyes, he comes back and all of that. We heard some confusion last week in terms of she doesn't know if this is a romance, or if her mother is being used, some confusion in terms of, do I want to study all of this history about he and Ben Tillman and the whole history of white supremacy in South Carolina? Or do I just want to blot all of that out and pretend that, you know, that's, that doesn't matter, or has no relevance in my life at all? The audio segment that we heard at the very beginning, wow, 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 just, it's been amazing reading this whole book, but the audio segment that we heard at the beginning, that was an interview between Harold Ford Jr. and Essie Mae Washington Williams. Now, the really interesting thing about that is that Harold Ford was mentioned in the audio segment, or the report that I read last week on the program. If folks remember, it was by Hazel Trice Edney, and it was Strom Thurmond raped a black female. She quoted Dr. Frances Cresswellzing, but it was when she was talking to Representative Clyburn, and he said, "You can look at the Congressional Black Caucus and see people like Harold Ford Jr." I thought that was interesting, because that interview, you heard about seven minutes from it, is from C-SPAN's Book Club. Harold Ford Jr., and at the time of this interview, he was a U.S. Representative. He was in Congress. We talked about him in Gwen Eiffel, The Late Gwen Eiffel's The Breakthrough. But they pulled him in specially to do this interview with Miss Essie Mae. He's not the normal person who does the book TV interviews, which is interesting, because you got two people who both look very pale, both classified as non-white, both look like they could have a white parent or a white grandparent, both whatever it is, but anyhow, that's who was doing the interview. And so they talked about her transition from med school to being a teacher, which is what she ultimately became. I thought that was interesting as well, because she mentioned last week about when she starts in Harlem, and she's going through all of this to teach, and she talks about all of the white supremacy racism, that they didn't even treat black patients at the hospital, or they gave them very poor treatment at the hospital. In fact, I want to make sure I give out the exact quote, because she didn't say anything about Nurse Rivers or anything of that nature. She says, oh, let's see, I got it here, she said, oh, I gotta, I gotta get through all of the broken-down, loitering, unemployed, sleeping, reeking-of-liquor, black male passages that we had to get over. But once you get through all of that, when she gets back to the hospital, she talks about how they do not treat black people well, and that the Harlem Hospital for black people, this is, this place is to stab wounds what MIT is to physics. Remember that? And she wonders where the black geniuses go. And so she says that new blacks in Harlem couldn't get decent medical care. Harlem Hospital, if it treated blacks at all, did so in a similar way to Coatesville Hospital, putting them in the poverty ward, or far worse, using them as medical guinea pigs, testing medicines and therapies on them without their knowledge or consent, and it was all Nurse Rivers' fault. Added that last line, but man, didn't we read The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks already in the book club? Right? We read that? Okay. We read Medical Apartheid in the book club already? Okay, just making sure. Anyway, and she didn't mention Nurse Rivers at all. And coincidentally, the Tuskegee Syphilis Experiment would have been happening real time while all of this is unfolding, and black people would have been totally ignorant. Who's more informed about racism? Anyway, so that was from last week. We heard her speaking with Harold Ford Jr., and interestingly, as it continued now, a little bit of their conversation will go beyond the part of the book that we'll get to this week, but I just, it was so fascinating hearing the tail end of the discussion with Miss Essie Mae and Harold Ford, where she says, hey, you know, he evolved, we continue to talk, and she says she didn't even think of him as a racist segregationist until she was about twenty-two, when he starts coming out and speaking against civil rights and all this, like, whoa, 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 when you were thinking that he might have been raping your mother and all of that, using her, you weren't thinking of him as a racist Confusion, that is the word for this text, and sad is easily one of the saddest books I've ever read. Equal parts sad and tacky. We will get started. Context of White Supremacy. Kudos to our narrator doing a smashing job. Essie Mae Washington Williams, Dear Senator, Audio Segment Number One.
I was too fatigued and overworked to take advantage of the magnificent city I was in. I could see the skyscrapers downtown from the hospital windows, but I could never find any time to get into the subway, which for a nickel could have been my magic carpet to endless adventures. And take Manhattan the way I had dreamed of doing. It was more like being in prison. I understood why they put prisons in the country. Being inside of all the big buildings and bright lights turned temptation into punishment. Despite its prestige, despite the honor of the medical calling, I began to wonder whether I had the right stuff to become a nurse. My only recreation those first few months was to go on long Sunday walks on nearby Seventh Avenue. If Broadway was the great white way, then Seventh was the great black way, the main drag of Harlem. The shopping may have been on One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street, but Seventh Avenue was where the action was. With a tree and flower-filled median, it was a wide, majestic boulevard. It was the path for both parades and the grand funeral processions where people were dispatched to heaven in style, often to a jazz band's accompaniment. There were movie palaces along the way, the Alhambra, the Lafayette, where from a plush orchestra seat, I watched Joan Crawford and Mildred Pierce. It was the first time I hadn't been exiled to the colored balcony, the nigger heaven, as it was called, after the title of a famous Harlem Renaissance book by Carl Van Vecten. To me, it was heaven to be able to sit wherever I chose. It was a celestial escape from the infernal duties at the hospital, which at my most exhausted moments seemed less a cathedral of healing than a medieval torture chamber full of screams and blood and dead bodies. I passed the famed nightclub Small's Paradise and despaired of ever having a date who would take me dancing. I wandered into the lobby of the Hotel Teresa at One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth and Seven. This was the Waldorf Astoria of Harlem. Joe Louis stayed there, and Eddie Rochester Anderson, and Hetty McDaniel, and all the African and Haitian diplomats whose color precluded lodging at the Waldorf. I found it hard to believe that until nineteen forty, like Teresa, like Harlem Hospital, had only been whites. Where had the stars stayed then? I saw where they lived. The two grandest neighborhoods in Harlem were Strivers Road and Sugar Hill. The former, the blocks of One Hundred and Thirty-Eighth and One Hundred and Thirty-Ninth Streets off Seventh, were elegant townhouses built in the eighteen nineties for rich whites, designed by the famed architect Stanford White, whose firm designed Columbia University and Madison Square Garden, where I also longed to go. Powerful lawyers and judges and businessmen and ministers and professors lived here now. Dr. Lewis Wright lived in one of these mansions. Such high achievers constituted Harlem society, which apparently was as stratified and snobbish as that of Park Avenue. All the people I saw coming out of those houses were all quite light-skinned, such pallor being a badge of class. Did that mean I could be part of the Harlem elite? Or if they heard my connection to Pitchfork Ben Tillman, would these swells slam the door in my face? I was working so hard, I was certain the issue would never arise. Darker-skinned entertainers lived here, too. Comic Stephen Fetchit, composer Ubby Blake, boxer Harry Wills. Harlem was proud of its native sons, and everyone lived vicariously through them. Walking on Strivers Road was our equivalent of going to Beverly Hills and taking a bus tour of the homes of the stars. The other great address was Sugar Hill, way north of One Hundred and Forty-Fifth Street, above the Polo Grounds, where the Giants played. The preeminent address in all of Harlem was four oh nine Edgecombe Avenue, a fourteen-story luxury apartment house that had once been all Jewish. Now the Jews came as guests, people like George Gershwin, Felix Frankfurter, George S. Kaufman, and Dorothy Parker. Their hosts were the new black aristocracy. People like lawyer Thurgood Marshall, genius scholar W.E.B. Du Bois, artist Aaron Douglas, folk singer Josh White, and in the penthouse, Walter White, head of the NAACP. A potent symbol of black power, four oh nine was a palace on a hill. Yet, it seemed completely out of reach to me. I felt a greater kinship with the people on the ground, the poor men on the stoops, the kids playing in the gutters, the desperate folks lining up at the pawn shops. That was the real Harlem, not the Harlem of chauffeurs and livery doormen and Cadillacs and Minks. Yes, these trappings of wealth were proof that blacks could make it in America, but the people in the streets were greater proof of how far we had to go. Given my secret white heritage and my inclusion in this exclusive nursing school, I guess I qualified for what Professor Du Bois had categorized as the talented tenth, that top percentage of blacks he believed would lead the race to glory. Nevertheless, in reality, I could barely keep my head above water. Alone in Harlem, I couldn't have felt more marginal. I found shelter from this storm of loneliness and alienation at the Abyssinian Baptist Church on One Hundred and Thirty-eighth Street between Seventh and Lenox Avenues. This grand marble edifice was the most legendary congregation in Harlem, if not America, thanks to its charismatic minister, the Reverend Adam Clayton Powell Jr., who in nineteen forty-three had been elected as New York's first black congressman. While the dashing Powell was religious aristocracy, his father, Powell Sr., had founded the church. He was by no means a stuffed shirt. He had shocked church elders by marrying a beautiful, high-yeller showgirl from the Cotton Club, Isabel Washington, and was as likely to be seen in the nightclubs as he was at the pulpit. Whatever his personal habits, Reverend Powell was a terrific speaker and a sassy symbol of hope. He hated discrimination, and he railed against it, both in church and in Congress. Powell was so light-skinned that it was always said that he could have passed for white. Perhaps the most inspiring thing about him was that he didn't want to. A lot of girls, the light-skinned ones, frequently talked about passing, marrying into the white world, preferably the rich white world, and living on Easy Street, Park Avenue, not Lenox. Here I was, born into the rich white world, the plantation world, and yet, where was I? It could have been easy to be resentful, because I was it, or at least half of it. Yet, it was doing me no good, aside from two envelopes of money. I was grateful to have a church to turn to, to count my blessings and pray for more, and to watch this great white preacher embrace his blackness. If he could be happy with it, so could anyone else. In his sermons, Reverend Powell often evoked Marcus Garvey, the famed separatist leader whose Black Freedom Hall stood right next door to Abyssinian Baptist. The Reverend got me so interested in Garvey, I went to the Harlem branch of the New York Public Library to read about him. Having thought the Coatesville Library was an august cathedral of learning, I was totally knocked out by the grandeur of the New York libraries, never more so than when I visited the main branch of Forty-second and Fifth Avenue, with its lion statues outside and soaring ceilings within, and its endless books on everything you ever wanted to know. It was being inside this library that first inspired me to think about becoming a teacher. Maybe it was the shafts of sunlight streaming in from the heavens over the fine wood tables, and the countless readers from every nation on earth wrapped up in their books and studies as if they were at prayer. In any event, in any event, it was a religious experience for me that ultimately would become a conversion. My goal in going to the library was to learn more about Garvey and the notion of black pride and awareness, and I was glad I did, because it made me prouder in the process. Marcus Garvey was a Jamaican who came to New York and found the universal, founded the Universal Negro Improvement Association, which swelled to millions of members at its height after World War I, when lynchings were at their height. He set up his own black United States, serving as the president, with his own black army, with black generals, his own black cross, with black nurses, his own religion with a black god. Black pride seems to have originated with Garvey, who was known as the Black Moses because of his desire to lead his people out of their figurative current slavery back to the promised land of Africa. Not all blacks embraced Garvey, who in the picture books I paged through at the library, was big and fat and wore plumed hats and flashy uniforms. He appalled the intellectual elite, such as W.E.B. Du Bois, with his doctrine of racial purity. Garvey even supported the Ku Klux Klan, because he concurred with their bloody mission to separate the races. I'm not sure what he would have thought of me. In any case, the southern-accented federal government of Woodrow Wilson was about as comfortable with Garvey as they were with leprosy. They were able to crucify him for mail fraud in connection with the sale of stock in his Black Star Line, on which he was planning to ship his disciples back to Africa. He was imprisoned and then deported as an undesirable alien. He died in complete obscurity in London in nineteen forty. But Reverend Powell wouldn't let us forget his former neighbor's proud mission. Powell, like Garvey, was often accused of being a charlatan, albeit a tonier one. I guess that's what happens when you make the white power elite as nervous as these two black leaders did. In the hallowed halls of the New York Public Library, I also read a famous novel called Passing by Nella Larson, and I learned that she was one of the key writers in what was known as the Harlem Renaissance, a flowering of black arts which took place in the late nineteen twenties and early nineteen thirties. A lot of the girls in my nursing class, especially the ones from outside the New York area, were reading it. It was a kind of Sex and the Single Girl for biracial women of the time, except with a very bleak ending. Many of my classmates, despite the nature of our supposedly selfless nun-like career, had fantasies of coming to Manhattan, meeting a rich man at the hospital, and settling down to the good life. Passing was just a story about two young and beautiful light-skinned childhood friends who met in their late twenties after having not been in touch since their teens. One girl had married a prominent black doctor associated with Harlem Hospital and lived on Strivers Road, where she is active in black charities and Harlem society. I immediately thought of Dr. Lewis Wright, but this was supposedly fiction. The other girl, who was blonde and blue-eyed but still half-black, has passed for white and married a powerful Park Avenue banker, who was also a hardcore racist. His pet named for his olive-skinned wife is Nigg. He had no clue about her mixed blood. In the book, the two friends reconnect, and each decides the other has the better life. The doctor's wife wishes she had passed and escaped from Harlem, while the banker's wife is sorry about the tense charade she is living and yearns to go back to Harlem. In the end, the white banker discovers his wife's deception, and he catches her at a glamorous black party in a Sugar Hill luxury apartment modeled on four oh nine Edgecombe. The book wasn't clear whether she is pushed or jumps out the window, but the message was clear: Passing was a bad idea. Nella Larson herself was biracial, the daughter of a Danish mother and a West Indian father from the Virgin Islands. Like me, she had become a nurse, training at Lincoln Hospital in New York. She worked for a time in Tuskegee, Alabama, at Booker T. Washington's Tuskegee Institute, but she hated the South and came back to New York and worked as a nurse at Lincoln Hospital, and then the city's Health Department. However, she found nursing very unsatisfying and quit the profession to become a children's librarian. She worked at none other than the New York Public Library at Forty-second Street and Fifth Avenue. There, she was inspired to become a writer. Larson's first book, Quicksand, which featured a cultured and urbane mixed-race heroine who marries a backwards preacher, won her many awards. Her second, Passing, was acclaimed as one of the best novels ever written by a black woman. Larson became the first black woman to win a Guggenheim Fellowship to research her next book in Europe, and then her world fell apart. Like Marcus Garvey, she seemed to have been railroaded... Like Marcus Garvey, she seemed to have been railroaded on questionable charges. Here that she had plagiarized a short story from an obscure white woman writer. She never wrote again, nor could she even get her librarian's job back. Instead, she was forced to go back to nursing. I heard she was working in a small black hospital in Brooklyn. I would have liked to meet her, to have met her, but I doubted that she was receiving many fans at that point. Larson's sad ending didn't make me dissatisfied with being black in any way, but it did underscore my own dissatisfaction with the nursing profession. That someone could leave it had never occurred to me before. I had seen the career choice of curing the sick as an irrevocable one. That Nella Larson could abandon it for becoming a librarian and a writer somehow made it seem okay to think about doing something else to help others, though her bad luck in the process stirred up all my superstitious instincts. Still, I was seriously reevaluating my decision. The nursing program was beating me down. It wasn't so much the endless hours or even the mundane tasks that took up a lot of my time, such as mopping floors and emptying bedpans, which seemed more appropriate to janitorial training than nursing. The real problem for me was the sick people. Yes, it was going to be my job to help them get well, but the vast majority of cases that came to Harlem Hospital seemed to be caused not by acts of God, but by acts of man. The savage police beatings, the shootings and stabbings over women and money and thwarted crime, the rickets and scurvy of children too poor and uncared for to eat a decent diet, the old people abandoned and left alone to die. The doctors may have thrived on these case studies as they saw them, but I didn't. I was both horrified and outraged at the poor care these black people were receiving daily, the preventative measures that would have helped to keep them out of Harlem Hospital. I decided I wasn't cut out to become Florence Nightingale, always responding to emergencies like a fireman. It occurred to me that I wanted to help people through education. That, I saw, was what most of the patients lacked, that and a fair chance in life. If knowledge was power, schooling seemed the best way to give black people a fair chance in America, and that's where I wanted to put my energies. The fact that my father had been a schoolteacher and was so proud of it may have lurked in the back of my head. One tends to want to follow in a father's footsteps, especially if those footsteps led to the kind of distinguished career he was having. Somehow, even if it were wishful thinking, I seemed to scent him looking over my shoulder. I felt in my heart that he would approve of my change of plans, wherever in the world he might be. The difficulty here, though, was that I knew that if I wanted to become a schoolteacher, I would have to go to college. Money was a big issue, and that my family didn't have any to speak of. I had my scholarship to nursing school, but it wasn't transferable. It really was less a grant than a work-study sort of program. In effect, I was working my way through nursing school, and was I ever working? College would be different. These were the days before college scholarships were as prevalent as they are now. Back then, they were highly unusual. Despite all of this, I made the hard choice of dropping out of the nursing program. I didn't really discuss the matter with anyone besides Calvin. Now who's gonna look after my bad heart? He teased me, but he was totally supportive. "You follow your heart, little sister," he told me. "You gotta love what you do, or it'll do you in." I didn't consult with the family in Coatesville. I didn't want to disappoint them. Of course, at the beginning, I felt badly about leaving. I wasn't helped by Mrs. Daly, the superintendent of nursing, who took my decision to drop out as a personal affront. "We're investing a lot of resources and a lot of energy on you, Miss Washington," she told me with an impatient scowl on her already stern face. "Do you realize how many young ladies we had to disappoint when we chose you for the program?" "I'm sorry, Mrs. Daly," I sputtered. "I don't wanna seem ungrateful." "You don't seem. You are." "What else can I do? You can stay right where you are, get back to work like a real nurse. We don't have time for whining and wailing." I hated being treated like a malinger. "I don't wanna waste any more of the hospital's time and your time if this isn't right for me." "Miss Washington, can you sincerely say you can do more good in some classroom somewhere than you can on our front line, saving lives?" "I believe so, yes, ma'am. I want to try." "Once you go, don't expect to come back. Your place will be taken." "Yes, ma'am," was all I could say. "And it will look awful on your resume to be a dropout. It raises a lot of questions. Schools don't like those questions. Neither do employers." "Yes, ma'am." I felt as if I were being interrogated for some heinous crime. "What will your parents say? Have you discussed this with them?" "Yes, ma'am," I lied. If she only knew who my parents were, she might have been a little more sympathetic. So I moved in with Calvin, who was very hospitable, to find space for me in his already crowded flat. I slept on the couch in his living room, enjoyed waking up to the spectacular view, and felt excited about getting to know the world below one hundred and tenth street. To that end, I planned to enroll for some classes in education and psychology at New York University in Greenwich Village. To pay my tuition, I needed a job, and jobs in nineteen forty-five were hard to come by, for blacks or for whites. My first position was a front desk clerk in a dry cleaners in Harlem. I lasted two months. After the excitement, heartbreak, and despair of Harlem Hospital, the cleaners was a very dull place, just a lot of middle-class people or people who aspired to be middle-class, bringing in their nice suits and dresses. At the cleaners, a fellow clerk found an opportunity downtown, and we both leapt at it. A ritzy lady shop off Fifth Avenue called Jane Engels needed two stock girls. We weren't to wait on the customers. Fancy white women who seemed like debutantes in those Fred Astaire movies had that task. Our job was to fold up the clothes after the customers tried them on, wrap boxes, and do an infinite, infinite amount of dusting. The owner was fanatic about dust. She dressed us in gray and white maids' uniforms that she had said came from Paris and insisted they weren't for domestic maids but for couture maids, as if I understood the difference. She claimed the maids at Christian Dior wore the same outfits, and that was supposed to give us a sense of pride and dignity. I think we made ten dollars a day, but I worked six days a week, and it was a living. Besides, I was now in Manhattan, the real Manhattan, at last. In the six months I worked for Jane Engels, I never once saw a black customer, although one of the clerks did mention that both Hazel Scott and Ethel Waters had bought clothes there, and Billy Eckstein had gotten something for one of his girlfriends. I did see movie stars, which was a total thrill. The first was Claudette Colbert, a regular customer. I was amazed at how tiny she was. She had seemed so big on the screen. I wanted to tell her how funny she was in The Palm Beach Story, but I didn't dare for fear of losing my job. Other stars who came in were Rosalind Russell and Kitty Carlisle. Then there were the wives of famous men like Phyllis Cerf, whose husband Bennett ran Random House. These ladies, whom I overheard planning lunches at the Colony, evenings at Toscanini at Carnegie Hall, and dancing at El Morocco, were so elegant and talked in that fancy New York theater style. They made me feel like a sharecropper in Edgefield, a complete hayseed country girl. The salesgirls looked and sounded as sophisticated as the customers. They had to make the sale and earn the commissions they lived on. In reality, most of them were poor Jewish girls from the Bronx and Brooklyn, and they were incredibly nice to me and the other stock girls. We were all together in this sisterhood of style. After work, I would take the subway to Greenwich Village to go to my classes. Just as I had never seen anything like Harlem, I had likewise never seen anything like New York's answer to Paris's left bank, its avant-garde bohemia. There were lots of little coffee shops or cafes, as they were called here, where people seemed to be sitting outside, smoking at all hours, especially those when everyone else was at work. There were many small theaters known as Off-Broadway, and the men all had long, straggly hair, goatees, and mustaches. What struck me most were the large number of interracial couples, all of them black men with white women, many of whom looked like artists wearing gypsy-style clothes and lots of exotic, jangly jewelry. I guessed being a true artist meant having a black boyfriend, most of whom seemed to wear berets and sport goatees and may have been artists themselves. These women were definitely not Jane Engels's customers. I didn't see one white man with a black woman, however, though I'm sure it must have happened in this atmosphere of anything goes. I had visions of Judge Thurman and my mother walking arm-in-arm down Bleecker Street and holding hands in the café, and nobody noticing them at all. I must have seemed like a complete square, wearing my French maid's uniform and carrying my schoolbooks. I'd get off the subway at Sheridan Square and walk over to Washington Square to my NYU classes. I worried that people would think I was dressed for Halloween, but the nice thing about New York was that nobody noticed anything. I found NYU to be a factory school. The classes were huge. The teachers were impersonal lecturers. The students were in a big hurry to get out of class and go somewhere else. I didn't form any close attachments. There were a few other black students in my classes, but they paid no more attention to me than the white ones. Maybe it was the maid's uniform. Maybe it was just New York. A boyfriend might have been the answer in this busy, lonely town, but I wasn't meeting anyone, nor was I actually looking. One boy from high school in Coatesville called on me when he got out of the service. I took him strolling on Seventh Avenue and went to Smalls Paradise, one of the few surviving nightclubs that had made Harlem so famous as America's partyland during prohibition. The more famous Cotton Club, which never admitted blacks in its heyday, had by now moved to Midtown. They used to have battles of the bands here, Count Basie versus Duke Ellington, in which hundreds of revelers would be up dancing, doing the Charleston. But now, things were relatively sedate, and riots had scared the White Park Avenue crowd from coming uptown to go slumming. In any event, no sparks flew between this nice boy and me, though I sensed he wouldn't have minded. I was too serious about my studies to think about romance, lovely as that might have been. Furthermore, I had never had a serious boyfriend up to that time, so I didn't actually know what I was missing. Another man who came to call on me generated a more enthusiastic response. Sometime late in nineteen forty-five or early in nineteen forty-six, after beginning my classes at NYU, I got a call at Calvin's from Strom Thurmond. He had tracked me down through Mary. He said he was in New York on business and wanted to see me. He had called me at Harlem Hospital and was worried when they told him I had left the program. I told him that I had decided to go into teaching instead of nursing and was taking classes. "You know how I feel about teachers," he said, and invited me to meet him the next day. I had never been more excited. It was as if Santa Claus had come to town to see me. I tried to control my emotions because I had seen this man come and go like the wind. I wanted to protect myself from great expectations and their attendant letdowns, but I couldn't quell my feelings. The call of one's father is nearly impossible to resist. Oddly, this time, my father asked me where we could meet. I assumed we would connect at his hotel, but for some reason, he seemed uncomfortable with that idea. Maybe he was with other people, people who would be watching him. I had another idea and asked him to call me back to see if I could work it out. I could, and I did. "Harlem," he exclaimed when I suggested he come uptown to meet me. He couldn't have been more surprised if I had suggested Peacock Alley at the Waldorf Astoria. "You want me to come up to Harlem?" The German fortifications he had just stormed during the war couldn't have seemed more daunting to him. "Harlem," he repeated. I explained to him that a friend of mine, an older nurse from Harlem Hospital, had a nice apartment on Sugar Hill, that she would lend to me for the afternoon. I had called her and told her I had a friend in from out of town whom I wanted to entertain. She was very kind. She didn't ask who or why, though she knew it was hardly some torrid clandestine affair. I gave my father the address, and he reluctantly agreed to come uptown. I must have changed clothes five times that morning. I called in sick from work. I tried to brush out my hair so it would be straighter, bouncier here, like they wanted for the cheerleaders in Coatesville, but it was not destined to be. So I made my way to the subway, the Seventh Avenue I R T, to go up to Sugar Hill and meet the most important man in my life. I wished he felt the same about me. Maybe he did. As far as I knew, I was his only child, unless my mother was keeping more secrets from me. And here he was, coming to New York to see me. He had to care, or he wouldn't be here. This was the first time I would be all alone with him, just he and I. I was totally nervous about how to handle myself. I stopped at a bakery and bought some pastries, which I later realized this healthy eater would never touch. I stopped at another grocery and looked for some bottled water, but they didn't sell any. Those were the days before Evian was everywhere, so I bought some ginger ale and hoped that that was healthy enough for the man. The doorman at the Edgecombe Avenue apartment building down the block from the famed four oh nine let me into my friend's apartment, filled with nice paintings and antique furniture. It was much nicer to meet here than in some hotel, as we had done in Philadelphia. I stood at the window for an eternity, looking down at the street, waiting for my father to come. I expected a cab. I didn't think he would be taking the A train. Instead, he arrived on foot. "Yankees," my father exclaimed as he came through the door in a frazzle. "Yankees." Apparently, he wasn't able to find a taxi and tried the subway and took the wrong line up to Washington Heights. Coming to Harlem was a big challenge, as big a challenge to him as D-Day. He apologized for being late. I offered him some ginger ale. He asked for water. He looked around the apartment as he caught his breath. "Very lovely place, Essime," he complimented me. "My friend has good taste," I said. "I wish I could live here someday." "I didn't realize how nice..." He let his voice trail off. I looked at my father as hard as he looked at me. His medals were gone. He was wearing a nice business suit and a tie. I wasn't sure what to say to him without the assistance of one of my two mothers. "Have you been eaten rot, Miss Essime?" was his first question. I immediately felt fat again, but tried not to be too defensive about it. "Now that rationing's over, I may have been overdoing it," I said. "All they eat up here is meat," he noted. "New Yorkers, all they know is steak, roast beef, corned beef, pastrami, hot dogs. Their idea of a vegetable is a fried potato. I hope you get some home-cooked meals." Oh, what I'd have given for a big steak. "I eat out all the time, sir. I'm either working or at school, so it's hard to do much cooking. How are you, sir? How was Asia?" He told me about his tour of duty in the Philippines, how dangerous it was even after Japan surrendered. Renegade Japanese soldiers would hide in caves just to ambush and murder American soldiers. He was convinced that both Japan and Germany would want to go to war again. It was just a matter of time, decades maybe, but in our lifetime. "We have to disarm them. We have to occupy them. We can't trust them. We already tried that once," he said. Again, he didn't ask about my mother, as if he already knew. He just asked about- He just asked about me, why I had left nursing school. It was like being with Mrs. Ardair all over again. "That sounded like a fine program," he said with a look of concern. "Are you sure you gave it long enough? I didn't care for Clemson when I started, but I grew to love it." "I think I've done nursing long enough now, sir, to know it's not for me." I explained my many summers at Coatesville Hospital, of which he was unaware. "That does it, then," he said like the judge he was, deciding my case, not guilty. "What shall we do next?" It was the first time he had ever used "we" with "me." I was flattered. "I want to go to college," I said. "What subjects do you like?" "English, history, social studies, no math." He chuckled. "What is it about ladies and math? Considering how you all love to shop, you'd think you'd be wonderful in math." "In stores, maybe, not in school," I begged off. He chuckled again. "Where would you like to go to college? Do you like this NYU?" "No, sir," I said. "It's too big." "What about Columbia University? That's a fine school." "I'm not sure about New York City, sir." "What about Harvard University or Wellesley?" "Pardon me, sir?" I had no idea what was Wellesley was. "A fine school." Every school he mentioned was a fine school. "It's a college for ladies outside of Boston. You could get a fine education there, or at Harvard. I know people up there." I knew what Harvard was, America's oldest, most famous university. President Roosevelt had gone there, and the other President Roosevelt, and W. E. B. Du Bois, and Dr. Louis Wright. Was my father crazy? What right did I have to consider such a grand place as that? And who was going to pay for it? He probably didn't know I was a maid in a dress shop trying to pay for two non-degree extension courses at NYU. Now he was talking about Harvard. A lady wasn't supposed to talk about finances, and a black lady never. Was he offering to get me in and to pay for it? And if he were, was he doing it to get rid of me, to send me so far north that he'd never have to see me again? What he said next made me ashamed for having such insecure thoughts, though I certainly was entitled to them. "What about coming down to South Carolina? We have a fine college right in Orangeburg." "That could be nice," I leapt at the opportunity. I had no idea what or where Orangeburg was, but if the choice was going to Harvard without my father or going to Orangeburg with him, I would have taken Orangeburg in a flash. Nice was not necessarily the appropriate word to use in planning an education, but it was the only word I had at my disposal at the time. "What is Orangeburg?" "It's a state college," he said. Suddenly, my heart sank, as I realized what he meant was our Negro college. What other college in South Carolina would accept black students? He didn't have the heart to say the word. In fact, he had never spoken the word in my presence. He couldn't bring himself to do it, but there it was. My father saw me as a Negro. I may have been half-black and half-white, but the rule in the courts was a drop of blood made you black. I don't know what else I was expecting. I had lived my whole life as a Negro, but to hear it from my white father and a judge at that made it a brutal ruling, and one with no appeal. I could either go to a Yankee college or a Negro college, but I couldn't go to a Southern college, because that meant a white college. And despite my white father, I couldn't be white. "They're doing a lot at Orangeburg. The state's spending a lot of money there. It's going to be a fine school. It's only an hour or so from Edgefield. It would be right nice to have you there. I'm going to get you some information on it, a catalog. I think it might just suit you, Essie Mae." "Maybe I should think about Harvard, if you know someone up there," I said boldly, spurred by the resentment of being classified. "The more I think about it, why go all the way up there? If you want to be a teacher, Orangeburg is as good as any. Besides, the prices rot." "The tuition isn't high?" I violated the female interdiction against discussions of cost. "Not like Harvard. Don't worry, Essie Mae. It will all be taken care of. If that's where you'd like to go, that's where you will go," he assured me. Then he went on about how much he had enjoyed teaching. "I taught vocational agriculture," he said, "at a high school near Edgefield. It wasn't Shakespeare, but it was to my boys, because Shakespeare wasn't going to put food on their tables." "What is vocational agriculture, sir?" "It's how to run a farm. The boys took voc ag and the girls took home ek." Harvard was sounding better and better. I hadn't particularly liked South Carolina, and I had no interest in farm life. Here I was in Manhattan, the progressive capital of the world, surrounded with radical ideas like interracial marriage and passing for white and homosexuality and communism. And my father was suggesting I come back down to rural, racist, reactionary South Carolina and study agriculture. I preferred Shakespeare. I didn't wish to insult him, though. His intentions were good. I promised him I'd look over the catalog when I got it. "We've got to get you out of this city, Essie Mae," he said to me. "It's no place for a girl like you to live. It's a rat race. I've seen the whole world now, and there's nothing in it like South Carolina. I can honestly say that it's God's country." As we began our goodbyes, he handed me one of those thick envelopes, the money envelope. "I hope this will help," he said. "Thank you, sir," I said, putting it into my purse. "I'll be in touch with you," he promised and gave me his powerful, painful handshake. Again, no hugs, no kisses. I wished we could have gone out and had an unhealthy pastrami sandwich together. I didn't want the colony or the store club. A hot dog cart or the counter of choc full of nuts would have done. Nobody would notice us. That was the great part of New York, the anonymity. But he obviously didn't think that way. He was a judge. Judges had to be above reproach. I saw my father to the door. I offered to go down with him to help him find a cab. He refused. "I can do it," he assured me, as if he were bravely off on some Mission Impossible. Or perhaps he didn't want to be seen in the street with me. How would that look, a Southern judge and a young black woman lea- leaving a Harlem apartment building? He shook my hand, and again, he was gone. I treated myself to a ginger ale and some of the uneaten sweets and luxuriated in my friend's apartment. For a moment, I felt rich, and even richer when I opened the envelope. This time, it was five hundred dollars, which seemed like winning the lottery. I went shopping at May Season, bought myself a dress. I felt I had earned it. Maybe I would wear it to my Harvard interview.
Context of white supremacy. So that is the end of the first audio segment. We will pick up with the beginning of chapter five, very easy. Uh, the number to dial is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The number again is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The email untiljustice@gmail.com, untiljustice@gmail.com. Before we get to the listeners, there's so much supplementary material uh, on this book. I hope it's constructive. Feel free to let me know if this is a waste of time and you just want to get to your comments and all the rest, or you just don't want to hear these old reports. Uh, this one that I thought was worthy of reading, this is the great Alton Maddox Jr. Uh, from two thousand three, his report, Thurman's Secret Child Evokes Horrible Memories of Rape. Usually, black people stand alone in demanding that a government entity disclaim any prior tribute to a racist. An example is the naming of the FBI headquarters in the nation's capital after J. Edgar Hoover, an infamous terrorist who created a racist culture in the FBI, as was evidenced by his unconstitutional attacks on black leaders and many times in concert with terrorist organizations. The FBI continues to frame and railroad blacks through its agents and its scientific lab. Bob Jones University, a favorite political backdrop for President Select George W. Bush, should be eager to take a philosophical stance against the late Senator J. Strom Thurmond for the recent revelations documenting his interracial sexual adventures and his life as a deadbeat dad. The religious right and the moral majority should follow suit. His name should be summarily removed from the federal building in Columbia, South Carolina, like the name of Congressman Adam Clayton Powell Jr. has been banned from federal buildings. Thurman's name and its association with the Dixiecrats is synonymous with the Confederate flag. Contrary to the spin that the media and some historians are seeking to put on his life, Thurman did not become an arch segregationist in nineteen forty-eight when he sought free rent in the White House. His family, which co-sponsored the state Constitutional Convention in eighteen ninety-five to disenfranchise blacks, had already introduced him to white supremacy. In nineteen twenty-five, a black person in the South had fewer rights than a Jew enjoyed in nineteen thirty-nine Germany. Eventually, the United States participated in World War II with the effect, if not the intent, of saving Jews. No war was ever fought in the twentieth century to rescue blacks from this country's apartheid policies. Notwithstanding the Reconstruction laws, the Supreme Court ruled shortly after the Civil War that blacks would have to look exclusively to the states for protection against white terrorism at a time when it was sanctioned by the states. In nineteen forty-eight, Thurman became the leading strident voice against civil rights and federal protection for Africans. He won. See, for example, Amadou Diallo. Will history repeat itself on New Year's Day? Being a house servant in the Thurman household in nineteen twenty-five would have been like a Jew serving Hitler in his state residence. In raping fifteen-year-old Carrie Butler, Essie Mae Washington Williams' mother, Thurman was being more than a hypocrite. He was exercising with impunity the privilege of being free, white, male, and twenty-one with unrestrained powers over black females. This was the law. No black female could be raped by a white male. The law penalized interracial sex while ignoring interracial rape. This level of victimhood was reserved for white women when the accused was black. There is still recognition of white slavery in the dictionary with no black counterpart in white lexicology. Any claim of rape by a black female has always been declared a hoax. Accordingly, most women suffer silently, like Carrie Butler. Any testimony by a black person against a white person is still incompetent, immaterial, and irrelevant, absent strong corroborating and direct testimony. If you are a plaintiff, the court is now empowered to impose sanctions. The next time you have a confrontation against a white person in New York City, go to a local precinct and swear out a complaint. The police department will insist that the white person file a cross complaint. Eventually, you will become the sole defendant, and the white person will become the only complainant. New York Attorney General Robert Abrams never believed that a white man could rape a black child. He said as much in or about April nineteen eighty-eight in a Newsday article. Even though Tawana was fifteen years of age, according to Abrams, no white man who had sexual intercourse with her could be prosecuted for statutory rape. Ultimately, I was indefinitely suspended from the practice of law in part for not allowing Tawana to be abused by Abrams' legal posse and grand jury. When Reverend C. Vernon Mason, Reverend Al Sharpton, and I were involved at the outset with defending a black female rape victim, it was like three enslaved blacks stopping their slave master from forcing himself sexually on his black female slave. Like a slave master, Abrams came after us with a vengeance. Mason was disbarred, Sharpton had to face seventy counts in two indictments, and I have been permanently suspended from the practice of law. If white outrage against black resistance to forced interracial sex still exists today, and it does, as is evident from the continued vilification of Tawana Brawley, you know what would have happened to Carrie Butler in nineteen twenty-five if she had exhibited the slightest resistance to Thurman, putting his filthy paws on her beautiful body. In nineteen twenty-five, when Essie Mae Washington Williams was born, the Ku Klux Klan ran the state houses in the South. More than fifty thousand unmasked Klansmen marched in the nation's capital with robes and hoods as more than a half million whites cheered them on. Between eighteen ninety-five and nineteen twenty-five, more than one hundred black women had been lynched in the South. Thurman remained a white supremacist until his last breath was divorced from his body. His racial beliefs inspired the authorship of his last will and testament. Like Thomas Jefferson, he chose to disclaim, not disinherit, an offspring simply because of the slave doctrine embedded in Roman law that an offspring follows the mother, partus sequitur ventrum. In addition to his racially motivated last will and testament, Thurman also devised a trust naming only his white family as beneficiaries to reduce estate taxes. These living and testimony instruments were made in contravention of public policy, and his estate should not be allowed to profit from his wrongdoing. Congress should invade the trust, and South Carolina should invalidate the last will and testament if Essie Mae Washington Williams is not accorded full rights as an heir. Any other course of action would violate the provisions of the Thirteenth Amendment, which should forbid all badges and incidents of slavery. Again, Alton Maddox Jr., Thurman's Secret Child, Evokes Horrible Memories of Rape. Published in December two thousand three, shortly after the passing of- Published in December 2003, shortly after the passing of Strom Thurmond. We will get to the callers, the number again, 720-716-7300. Press *61 if you would like to participate. First few folks who dialed in with a hand up, proceed.
Hey, I'm from New Jersey. Let me just turn this water off in the background. Okay, um, I took some, uh, brief notes. Um, I'm from the, uh, New Jersey area, so that name definitely, um, um, definitely is familiar, Alton Maddox. Um, wow, okay. He goes up to Harlem, uh, he gives his daughter offspring that was conceived from rape envelopes of money. Um, just, you know, just, just gave me just, you know, I, it could be a false comparison. It, it, it just felt like a prostitute, a John passing an envelope, you know, to a prostitute. You know, it was just real, just real transactional. Um, when she was sticks in her hair, you know, we just seen the passage of the Crown Act. Um, I, and, and for that reason, you know, once you come to knowledge of racism, white supremacy, it is not that black women wanted or inspired to be white by straightening their hair. Society forces upon them. But her sticks in her hair is her also conforming to whiteness. Um, just the mind games that he plays on her, she's a victim. When he comes to see her, she's playing in her head, you know, you know, wondering if he really wants to be there, if he really wants to come see her. Um, you know, she questioned and said, you know, uh, he had to because he wouldn't be there. I mean, that's, that's just, that's, that's terrorism. That's, that's mental, that's, that's mental, uh, anguish. Um, she compared for Strom Thurmond, and her being so sympathetic to this, uh, white rapist, her father, comparing him coming to Harlem as challenging as D-Day. So those that's familiar with D-Day, that's World War II, that's the invasion, the, uh, the Allied forces, um, going up against Nazi Germany. So him coming to Harlem was compared to D-Day. Uh, he was in the Philippines, God knows what kind of atrocities him and other US soldiers put upon Philippine women. Um, she also says she loved when he said "we." So I'm assuming that "we" invoked inclusion, you know, because I'm assuming that, you know, you were almost white. You know, if your mother wasn't black, you were almost there, you were almost white. So when he said "we," also just, just playing mind games, um, you know, flirting with her emotions, even when it came to the school, you know, his, 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 he couldn't, he couldn't contain, he tried to be hospital and, and just, you know, this southern gentleman, but his daughter, who comes from his DNA, just, just the fact that she has that Negro strand, you know, she couldn't be nothing more but on a farm somewhere. You know, that's, that's what her father thought of her. Um, you know, just, 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 I mean, just, just, all right, I mean, she, she's definitely, just definitely a victim, definitely a victim. Um, something else, uh, flirting with the school, da-da-da, she didn't, so, oh, he, oh, she also went out her way to suppress her emotions. She didn't want to insult him when he was running down a list of white schools that he knew he didn't support her going to, but she didn't protest in fear of insulting him when that whole, that whole visit was an insult within itself. Man, this, 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 this is a good book, I must say. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll yield.
It's amazing, absolutely amazing. I'm so glad that we, uh, chose it, can learn a lot. Much obliged, victim in New Jersey. Uh, other folks who dialed in, if you have commentary.
Greetings, everyone.
Retired firefighter in Florida.
Uh, I don't think that it would, uh, improve that much, but, uh, what I'm listening to is a, uh, a lot of confusion based on a foundation that, uh, she had nothing to do with. Uh, but, uh, you know, as, as you, as one gets older, uh, if they're not advised or counseled, uh, they make up, make up their own understanding, uh, with very little, uh, uh, background from a scientific standpoint. That, that's what it, that's what it sounds like as far as this person and their description of their life and the, uh, the significant people that's involved in her, uh, uh, birth. Uh, the, the father, uh, not a racist suspect, but racist, uh, is quite, uh, scientific, uh, in his practice, his racist practicing, uh, very skilled, very skilled, would, 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 would be considered to be very skilled even today, uh, as a white person. Uh, and, uh, basically, uh, ju- just by the standpoint of her, through the writings of her book, she's, she's questioning the encounters herself. In other words, she doesn't fully know exactly what is the purposes and, and the outcome, that sort of thing. Uh, because her father, who is a white supremacist, is a white supremacist that is highly skilled in his practices. Um, also, when I heard, when I heard Orange Bird, the first thing I thought of was the Orange Bird massacre, uh, that school that was suggested, South Carolina State University, I'm quite aware of. Uh, I, uh, uh, coached a lot of, uh, young people that, uh, actually went to school there, uh, quote-unquote historical black college. Uh, I'm not gonna go through on what encouraged with, uh, something called the Orange Bird massacre, but you can basically, uh, find it out yourself and, uh, anything that has massacre at the end of it, you got to figure it's not, it didn't go too well. And it didn't go too well for, uh, non-white black people with, which is something that is not unusual during that time and still is possible today. Uh, yeah, uh, first thing came to my mind when she was kinda like frustrated about nursing. I was thinking, what was she expecting? What was she expecting? You know, I mean, still today, that job, still today, is a, is a job where those people do a lot of work. They do a lot of work. They may, they may work more than the physicians that they assist. Uh, I, uh, my, my oldest sibling, sister, she, uh, was a registered nurse for about 25, 30 years, uh, retired, uh, years ago. And, uh, that's all I can say for right now. Thank you. Oh, oh, one more, one more thing, uh, the, another thing that, that keeps a lot of people during her era confused, I don't think it was a lot of, of, uh, scientific counter-racist information in books. I mean, it was some, don't get me wrong, and it was some in New, if, if it was a lot, it had to be in New York. But one has to be inspired to seek information, to get enlightened on racism, what it is and how it works. And I don't think she had, uh, that, that many, uh, uh, people that would kinda like, uh, inspire her to go in that direction of reading and studying, uh, the information. Wait a minute, although she did, I did hear something about Marcus Garvey, so I may be kinda like contradicting myself, uh, but, uh, it probably would have helped if she would have kinda like really, really stuck with that, then she probably would have been able to, uh, through reading and having, having the example of a person that is, uh, uh, her father, that she probably could have at a quicker, quicker level, uh, gained some understanding of, of, uh, her personal life as well as the world around her. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. No, uh, Dr. Francis Crest Wellzing's ISIS paper to read, no Neely Fuller Jr. code book to read, uh, at this time period when she's thinking about, where do I wanna go to school and college and all the rest of it? Uh, let's see, other folks, *61 if you have commentary. Uh, our narrator, who's doing a brilliant job, she also wrote in as well, and I shared some of it because there's so many reports, that's why I'm trying to share Alton Maddox and some of the other folks that we've heard, trying to make sure I include their material. So our narrator wrote in, she added, "Thank you for sending the 2003 article by the white writer Jeffrey Gettleman," have to share that one later. "I appreciate it that it somewhat corrects the romance and in-love narrative of Washington Williams' recollection. As the non-white product of that tragic arrangement, Washington Williams isn't to be blamed." Here, here, after all, deception and confusion were a big part of her formative years, a time when most teenage people are just beginning to shape and understand their world. "Thurman was a powerful US senator longer than Washington Williams' mother was even "The fact that Thurman lived through the very early 20th century into the 21st while Carrie Butler died in her 30s is evidence enough of the power dynamic that disqualifies the arrangement as a love story or even a love affair." Sad, you can say that into infinity. "I appreciate that this story further illustrates the point that you have made, that racism has never been about separation." Absolutely, words are so important. Instead, racism is the power exerted by a dominating and ravenous coven of people over another weaker and confused." That is another one, you just keep saying that word, "confused," group of people. Again, sad, that's the word of the book, sad. Confusion, 1A, 1B, switch them up, sad, that's the main, sad, 'cause when you are confused, phew, you get frustrated, you get mad when you're being confused, but I mean, that is sad, to be confused, and you're so confused, you don't even know, like, wow, I am super confused, phew. Kudos to our narrator, let's see, I'll get in some of, uh, my notes and read as we go. One, I just said yesterday, I would love to have this book via Kindle, that way I can see what other people thought, or what other people, other readers think is important, 'cause you can see the things that they highlight, right? Wow, though, even, without even really putting in any effort, now I have this book in Kindle, so I can go through and check and see, uh, you know, what's, uh, what's important, and thus far, I, I don't know if maybe a lot of people didn't read this book, but thus far, at least the portion that we've read today, I didn't really find any, you know, I didn't bump across any highlights. Like, when we read Black and White, The Razzie, Richard Williams, I was able to see other things that people highlighted, but not till this time around, we'll see for the second half of the reading. Uh, so, let's see, beginning. Why, I have taken so many notes, like, we have to go a little bit slower, it's been amazing how many, every week, I've just taken a huge number, I can't even, okay, it took me forever, I couldn't even believe that I had all these notes just for this week. All right, television is enormous, like, she has talked about going to the movies and all of that so many times, this is like, uh, really almost a century before Netflix and Hulu and eight billion channels and all the rest of it, and television has this much of an info, can you imagine? Like, man, you got television on your watch, Netflix, everybody has it in their back pocket on their phone, 15,000 devices, like, wow! And it's all white supremacy entertainment, every, or every eight thousand channels and YouTube and all the rest of it, white supremacy entertainment. Uh, she says, "I watched Joan Crawford and Mildred Pierce. It was the first time I hadn't been exiled to the colored balcony, the nigger heaven," whatever that is, "as it was called after the title of famous Harlem Renaissance book by Carl Van Vecten." I have not read that one, we'll have to check that out. Uh, "I passed the fangs, the famed nightclub Small's Paradise." Uh, man, I mean, very much of Malcolm X during his Detroit Red days. Uh, let's see, Joe Louis, oh, she says, "I, I wandered into the lobby of the Hotel Teresa at 125th and 7th. This was the Waldorf Astoria of Harlem. Joe Louis stayed there and Eddie Rochester Anderson and Hattie McDaniel and all the African and Haitian diplomats whose color precluded lodging at the Waldorf. I found it hard to believe that until 1940, the Teresa-like Harlem Hospital had been whites only. Where had the stars stayed then?" Barn, wherever, shack, wherever the other niggers are, but you had better not let us, you know, catch you around here, like, buddy, you talk about, uh, having some people to study up at Harlem Hospital, like, buddy, let Jack Johnson or one of you, you know, get lost and wander up here. Uh, let's see. She says, "Dr. Louis Wright lived in one of these mansions." I'm gonna have to check my, my time to give you an article, just, Dr. Louis Wright, the reason I think she spent so much time on him? Dr. Louis Wright is like Dr. Francis Crest Wellzing of his era, like, he's a second-generation physician, like, wow! Uh, when she talked about him last week, I was just like, let me go and do some research on this guy, 'cause she spent a lot of time, like, you know, saying all these great things, and this guy worked to get in black, wow! So let's see, what else? Uh, she said, she's talking about, uh, the high society in Harlem where the cool people live, she said, "All the people I saw coming out of those houses were all quite light-skinned, such pallor being a badge of class." Now, again, wait a minute now, because our author, victim, Ms. Essie Mae, is pale because she is the product of child rape. We've talked about this before because it seems that a lot of victims, ooh, the hair, that skin complexion, not as dark, black, get back. So are we saying we like that because, hey, even though this is the product of rape, hey, lighter complexion? Not be treated as bad, black, get back, hey, hey, hey? Some advantages here, maybe rape might have some, you know, advantages, like, that's almost what it's seeming like, just following the logic. Pervase, and they say, all of this is victim, but I mean, that's what I, confusion, how it can totally warp your thinking in the system of white supremacy, and I mean, how can it not, all this deception, she's running up to strangers thinking they are her father, light skin, the badge of class, that's only in a system of white supremacy racism. Uh, and it continues, she's talking about all the people, the cool people who live in this area, and she says, uh- And she says, uh, "Their hosts were the new black aristocracy, people like lawyer Thurgood Marshall." So like, wow, our timing, we would be reading this today, Thurgood Marshall, first black person that they allow on the SCOTUS, and then today confirmed Katanji Brown Jackson. What do they have in common? I said, okay, so I've seen this now for a century. If white people allow a black person to be on the Supreme Court, you cannot be classified as black, male or female, and be married to someone who is also classified as black. Very important, anyway. So who lives here? She says, "Thurgood Marshall, W.E.B. Dubois, Aaron Douglas, folk singer Josh White, and in the penthouse, Walter White." Now even that's like, wow. Hmm, Thurgood Marshall, I just said he's not married to a black female. Walter White is so pale that he actually could and did pass for white often to go in the South and investigate lynchings and what have you. Was kinda dangerous, cause sometimes they would get informed, race soldiers, that, oh, we got this nigger who can pass, gotta be on the lookout, but he was so pale, you know, they'd be talking to him sometimes, like trying to find him. Like, oh no, I haven't, I haven't seen the suspicious nigger, ooh, let me get out of here. But he's living in the penthouse. I strongly suspect if he was darker, he wouldn't be in the penthouse. I could be totally, totally wrong, doubt it. Let's see. Uh, she says, "Professor Dubois had categor-" man, it's amazing. So I went to investigate, who is this Dr. Louis Wright? Because they kept saying he wrote so many articles in, uh, W.E.B. Dubois' The Crisis. I said, hmm, let me go investigate. And so I've been looking through The Crisis and Dubois, all over you guys, his reports and everything. Uh, they have a huge report in the middle of The Crisis, Margaret Sanger. We talked about all this in Medical Apartite, but I just, again, victims, non-white people, black people, we are not experts on racism. Continue, I even posted a picture, cause it's a huge article that Margaret Sanger has about birth control for the niggers. Anyway, uh, Eugenics, anyway, she says, uh, "Dubois categorized as the talented tenth, that top percentage of blacks he believed would lead the race to glory. Uh, unless I'm in misinformed, he later renounced that and saying, oh no, that's not what they're gonna do at all. They're in for self-interest, they're not about the business of replacing white supremacy with justice, and probably not much evidence that the other ninety percent are interested in that either." Uh, let's see. Again, I said it's a lot of so-called colorism this week. Uh, a lot of girls, the light-skinned ones, frequently talked about passing, marrying into the white world, preferably the rich, white world, and living on Easy Street, Park Avenue, not Lenox. Now again, now what does that entail? That means I'm seeking out a racist? How do you go about seeking out a racist? What does that mean? All of the non-white people, my so-called family member, they're kicked to the curb? And now I just go along practicing racism for the rest of my life? Like what all does that entail and do, is it discussed in that much detail? I know there's some books, Langston Hughes and others, uh, where they talk about this, but I mean, wow. That, uh, wow, that's, uh, that is something to ponder on, let's see, we continue. Uh, she talks about her glory of going to the library. Thought it was important, she said last week that she tried to encourage some of her friends to go to the library and they were not interested. Eee, and I suspect that might be even worse now, like go to the library, what? Please, Playstation five, man, I'm not going to the library and all the rest of it. Um, or like maybe I'll go to the library and then just, you know, play video games and all the rest of it. They got wifi there, so I can just get my phone out and, you know, but I'm not going to look for any books, like you gotta be joking. Uh, let's see. It seemed like she did do some reading into retired firefighter, like even for her time, I mean, hey, she didn't just go to the library to read about white people, she went, she says, "My goal in going to the library was to learn more about Garvey and the notion of black pride and awareness." Now I almost did slip my James Brown, Black and Proud in, but you know. Uh, she said, "I was glad I did because it made me prouder in the process." And I went almost my Neely Fuller, now now what's the difference between a dignified, proud slave and a foolish or undignified? Uh, let's see, da-da-da, she says, "He set up his own black United States, serving as the president with his own black army with black generals." Now I chuckled for a second, give me one moment. Whew, okay, I chuckled for one moment. I said, man, for those who were with us when we read, um, Nutriside, uh, the Black Liberation Army or African Liberation Army. And I said, what is that? I've never heard of that before, it was African, that was how I was reading the book, was the African Liberation Army. I said, what is that? Have you heard of that before? I don't know, I don't know what that is, like the, what, what? Uh, I'm thinking the same thing here, like, man, like, really, really? Black nurses, blah, 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 black pride, uh, all of that. Uh, Dr. Kenneth O'Reilly, we talked about Marcus Garvey in detail, his book, The FBI Secret File or Racial Matters, The FBI Secret File on Black America from nineteen sixty to nineteen seventy-two. Um, and he talks about even way before all of that, J. Edgar Hoover and Marcus Garvey's Coin Tell Pro operation. She didn't say Coin Tell Pro, she just said Woodrow Wilson, uh, going after Marcus Garvey. Um, comparing them to leprosy, biblical metaphor, and even Jesus, that they went to crucify him. She has the double, um, biblical metaphors. Uh, let's see, next. She talks about Nella Larson's passing, so this is the second time this calendar year, uh, that we have talked about this book. Uh, and it was just remade, uh, they made a, a movie, uh, readaptation, uh, of the book, uh, into a movie. I think the, like, end of last year, I believe it came out, we talked about it briefly with Gail Luke Kosick. Um, she was a guest on the, guest on the program, white woman, you have to go back and listen to that, anyhow. Uh, so she talks about, I guess this was when all of this first came out, the book, uh, this time period. And she says, "It was kind of a sex and the single girl," like Sex and the City, I'm guessing, uh, "for biracial women of the time, confusion, uh, except with a very bleak ending." Now again, I don't know what the happy part is, if this is starting, if these biracial unions are starting off with all of this deception and rape and imbalance of power, I don't know where, you know, at, where's the good part in all of this? There's a lot of these stories, this, this is like a whole genre, the tragic mulatto genre. Anywho, uh, she says that this was passing, this was Sex and the Single Girl for biracial women of the time, except with a very bleak ending. Many, and I don't even know if that term was being used at the time for, but we're like, was that being used at that time period? Like I'd have to go back and look at the etymology, but I'd even have a, a pause. I don't think people were calling themselves biracial, uh, during that period. You were, I mean, it's nigger-colored. I could be an error, anyway, uh, except with a very bleak ending. "Many of my classmates, despite the nature of our supposedly selfless, nun-like career, had fantasies of coming to Manhattan, meeting a rich, white man," well, she doesn't say white, but I mean, really, "at the hospital and settling down to the good life." Now again, what all does that entail? Passing was such a story, let's see, let me make sure, da-da-da. "The other girl, who was blond and blue-eyed but still half-black, had passed for white and married a powerful Park Avenue banker who was a hardcore racist." I don't know what a hardcore racist is, like you have five fingers in a jar instead of one. "His pet name for his olive-skinned wife is Nig." Hmm, self-respect. Uh, and she says, "The book's clear," and she jumps, either she jumps or is pushed off. Now again, why would this be a bestseller in the system of white supremacy where a non-white female, who is probably the offspring of some rape, she is found out by her husband to actually be not a half-nig, but the whole thing, a nigger? And either he throws her off the balcony balcony or she is killed and this becomes a bestseller? Are you kidding me? Jesus, let's see. And, I don't know, now, I don't know, is that how the new one ends? I don't watch it, I have no intention of watching it, but the one that they just remade, is, is that the same conclusion? Like Jesus, we need to, we need to drag that into the twenty-first century? Turn out reading more important than watching television. And then they, it made me say, man, I would like to get a biography on, uh, Nella Larson. Like to hear more about her life, to her to be accused of plagiarism and all the rest of it. Anyway, says, uh, yeah, speaking, Nella Larson herself was biracial now, that's why I said, I'd like to know, like, so, was, was her mother raped? Like give me the details on this. Uh, she says, uh, "Danish mother, West Indian father from the Virgin Islands." Hmm, hmm, hmm. So it wouldn't be the mother rape, it'd be the father, other way around. Um, "She worked for a time in Tuskegee, Alabama, at Booker T. Washington's Tuskegee Institute, but she hated the South." See, that's why I said I'd like more details. Were you there when the syphilis study was happening? Not that she'd have to be involved or anything, but possible. What did you not like about Alabama specifically? Like I'd like more details on that. Then she comes back to New York, uh, let's see. Quicksand, uh, so, now again, I'd have to know, like, is that have the same sort of tragic ending? Where the, the protagonist is killed or commits suicide? Or something horrible happens to her at the end of all this, once they find out, oh, you tricked us, you're actually a nigger? Have to check and see, and I have to see biography on Nella Larson. Uh, let's see. "Like Marcus Garvey, she seemed to have been railroaded on questionable charges, uh, here that she had plagiarized a short story from an obscure white woman writer she never wrote again." One, I thought of, uh, the black male journalist, he wrote, Alex Haley, wrote Roots. He also was accused of plagiarizing, uh, Roots, uh, from, I believe, a white author. Uh, I think that, and I think they even, you know, conclusively, I think that's how it's, you know, written, uh, that he plagiarized, uh, this effort or at least portions of it. Uh, I'm not sure, I have to, I mean, if you are accused, and I don't know if she did it or not, accused of plagiarizing a book, that is not the same thing as being a black person and you're trying to do the best you can to work against racism, white supremacy, and white people in the highest levels of government positions sit around and conspire a way to jail, totally thwart everything that you're doing, not, you're not even doing anything incorrect. We're just thinking of some way to totally destroy you, which is what happened with Marcus Garvey. Like I'd have to think on it, get the biography on Nella Larson, but to me, that does not seem like the same thing at all. People can let me know if I'm, I just didn't read it correctly, maybe. Uh, let's see. Oh, I thought this was so important. She talks about what was the problem for her nursing. She said, "The real problem for me was the sick people. Yes, it was going to be my job to help them get well, but the vast majority of cases that came to Harlem Hospital seemed to be caused not by acts of God, but by acts of man, the savage police beatings." Wait a minute. She's talking about back in the nineteen forties. I thought white people, they tell me all the time, they didn't know. Niggers are getting their heads cracked, wait a minute, you're telling me Harlem Hospital? The first thing, this isn't the last thing, this is the first thing that she says. Harlem Hospital, you got all these kids, the vast majority of cases that come to Harlem Hospital, what's the first thing that she names? Sad, there's that word again. That word might be in this book a bunch of times, savage. Cause just last week, Strom Thurmond, he gets savage, talking about the, just savage. The Germans, they're savages, they're savages, then she's saying, I can't even work at Harlem Hospital. I'm thinking I'm coming here to help sick, all I'm doing is cleaning up from victims of the nigger knocker. NYPD, Eric Garner, that's all I'm doing. I thought white people were ignorant about this. Hmm, let's see. And then she says to the police, "The shootings and stabbings over women and money and thwarted crime." Now that right there is embarrassing, you know, for a lot of reasons. Minimize conflict, racists know how to get non-white people in areas, uh, and totally terrorize them and have everybody impoverished and in conflict with each other and just fighting over nonsense and sexual confusion and you took my woman and all the, psh. Minimize conflict with other non-white people, it seems like that's been a problem for many, 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 many years. Uh, let's see. One of those, that's the type of passage I like to save when, uh, crotchety, older black people sometimes, victims, but they start talking about these young people with their pants hanging off their behind and they're running around and shooting, and you're like, whoa, 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 whoa. This has been a problem for a long time. Anyway, uh, let's see. Hmm, 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 hmm. Oh, oh, so many, I could pause right here for a little, cause she says, "Case studies." Dr. Louis Wright talked about that in detail, using black people as case studies, ala Tuskegee Syphilis Experiment. Uh, let's see. Hmm, she says she didn't, she didn't like to always be responding to emergencies like a fireman in Florida. Uh, let's see. Seeing that most people, most of the black patients lacked education for a fair chance in life. Now I do think that's important for people like her father, who's an educator, uh, and Ben Tillman, who worked so stringently to keep black people from getting an education. Uh, let's see, and, and I think that's true as well, because hey, it could be epigenetics. The fact that her father taught that even on a genetic level could be influencing decision-making and what have you. We don't know, but they say epigenetics influences a lot of things, even your predisposition for your diet and what have you. So certainly you have Dr. Francis Crest Wellzing, third-generation physician, Dr. Louis T. Wright, second-generation physician. Uh, let's see. Uh, when she says money was a big issue about dropping out of nursing school and going to education, it shouldn't be because her father is a big wig, whole family, I mean, it shouldn't be. And it shouldn't even be the type of thing where I have to think and hope and quite like, what are you talking about? Like, you're my dad, parents help their children with their education. Get to it, man, you got thirteen years to make up for too, so I mean, hey, really? I should be in the lap of luxury while I'm in college getting my learn on. Uh, let's see, she says, uh, oh my gosh, so she goes to talk to Mrs. Daley to let her know, you know, this nurse thing isn't gonna cut it, just clean it up after police want to do education. This white one says, what? What do you mean? Any whining and wailing, excuse me, we're always children, see, just little children, ungrateful little children, you know? Supposed to listen to white come in here, wasting our time and things, see? She says, "I hated being treated like a malingur, that's how they treat black people." I love that word too, uh, which, uh, Mediva, Nelson Mandela, I believe, used that word specifically when he talked about they would deliberately malinger when they were out in the yard, they're supposed to be working, they would do this as a form of, uh, counter-racism. Uh, let's see. She says she lied when Mrs. Daley said, "Do your parents know?" And she says, "Yes, she lied to her." She said, "Maybe if she knew who her parents were, she would have been more sympathetic." I don't know why that would have been the case, like you're still a nigger, like, okay, your dad is Strom Thurmond? Okay, he raped a maid, mhm. That's even more a reason, like you should be, get in the nursing program and, you know, whatever, like stop wasting our time. Uh, let's see. White validation too, pretty explicit. Uh, let's see, she says, "In nineteen forty-five, jobs were hard to come by for blacks or for whites." I don't know, I mean, that's World War Two and what have you, a lot of soldiers coming back with a lot of money and GI Bill and all that, white soldiers. Hmm, I don't know, I think if you're a white person at this time, you'd get a job. Uh, let's see. Uh, movies, just said that movie and TV has such a huge impact. Uh, oh, she mentioned Billy Exton, I remember Neely Fuller Jr., one of the very first times that I spoke with him, the year that the cows came into existence, two thousand seven, uh, he mentioned Billy Exton. And saying Billy Exton was pretty pale as well, important for our dialogue, but he was non-white. And he was a great singer, uh, he could have been comparable to like Nat King Cole. Uh, but he, uh, Mr. Fuller said racism, white supremacy just totally ruined his career because he just refused to go out and do all the, uh, segregated so-called the clubs and all the rest of it and just really thwarted, uh, I mean, you could say that for billions, you know, of artists, uh, all over the world, uh, but really thwarted his career. And then, uh, I went, I remember going to the library researching, uh, Billy Epstein and seeing some of the pictures and what have you. And then a few years later, NPR did a whole segment and they reiterated the exact, you know, same thing, like that's the reason you don't know his name, like the- Like the same way that people know like Nat King Cole and other stars around that same, uh, time period. Uh, but immediately think of Billy, uh, ask Mr. Fuller next time he's on a program, like, do you remember Billy Epstein and how racist? I bet he and me like, oh yeah, he could rattle off some great ones. Uh, let's see. These pretentious white women who are coming in St. Theater and all the rest of it, that so reminded me of Woody Allen. That pretentiousness that you have to put on this air of sophistication and we go to the theater and the opera and the symposium and we go to the museum and the art gallery and I, you all are race soldiers. Woody Allen is a child rapist, just like fricking, uh, Strom Thurmond here. Like, what are you talking about? You're refined at white supremacy racism and that's about it. Uh, let's see. And she's, we're all together in this sisterhood of style. Are you serious? Are you serious? You're in the coat room. You're in the stockroom, you're a stock gal. Victim of white supremacy, that's what I am too, Negro. They probably wouldn't even let me in the stockroom, but I'm just saying, like, are you serious? You see this saying, confusion two thousand and twenty-two. I was thinking this is a sisterhood, brotherhood with white people. I say, don't call other victims brother and all that. See. She's talking about confusion. She says, what struck me most were the large number of interracial couples. All of them black men with white women, many of them whom looked like artists wearing gypsy-style clothes and lots of exotic jangly jewelry. Now, I mean, really. Really. Confu- this is, wow. Refinement. Progressive. Wow, this is the place to be because a black male can walk down the street with a white, and she even notices that. She says, I didn't see one white man with a black woman, however, though, I'm sure it must have happened in this atmosphere. Like, hmm. And she even notices the distinction, these are not those, uh, high-class white women who would come in the boutique and theater and all the rest of it. This is not them. Even though they're probably doing the same thing too. Uh, let's see. She says, oh my, I shared this on social media. She says, I had visions of Judge Thurmond and my mother walking arm in arm down Bleecker Street and holding hands in a cafe and nobody noticing them at all. What in the world? There is confusion and then there is confusion. Like, she already in the book was wondering, is he just like using and exploiting my mother who was fifteen at the time that this happened? What? Am I, so I'm even trying to think, so am I, am I thinking at the time that they met, am I thinking like in the past romantically? Him being twenty-three and her fifteen, they're walking down the street hand in hand? Are we fast forwarding this a little bit? What in the, he, he is so ashamed, he won't even go out and eat peanuts with you. Can't be seen with this Negro woman? And walking down the street with the maid? Confusion is lethal. Like I said, this is one of the saddest books. I don't even think it's any competition. Like, this is the saddest book I have ever read. This is why Janetta Rose Baris, Whatever Happened to Daddy's Little Girl? That's why we started, to have a better understanding of why we would encounter things like this in the book along the way. Uh, let's see. She says, uh, these that Count Basie Duke Ellington and which hundreds of revelers would be up dancing during the Charleston, uh, all these dances, the Lindy Hop, but now things were relatively sedate and riots had scared the White Park Avenue crowd from coming uptown to go slumming. Uh-oh. That's why I said, now really, you can't tell me you're refined and theater and caviar and all the rest, and then you're slumming so-called, where you want to come and rape the Negroes and do drugs in the Charleston. Minister Malcolm X talked about all of that traffic in there, said that was his job. You want to come slumming up, look up Detroit Red, right? We read all that. Alex Haley. Uh, let's see. And we've encountered that a few times where regardless of the area, even in, uh, sundown towns, James Lowen passed away last year, uh, where he said, uh, even in other towns where they got Negro area, Africaville and Negro land, uh, that would be the area for slumming. Come get some narcotics and some raping on. That's where you go to Negro land. Bronzeville, they have a little tacky names like that. Uh, oh man, the metaphor. So she says, they're gonna meet. She had talked, she did the research before, Ben Tillman and all that, now they're gonna meet. She says, I had never been more excited. It was as if Santa Claus had come to town to see me. I tried to control my emotions. That number one, like, this is, I think, the third time she's seen him in life. If I'm, if my count is correct, you've seen him three times. There's no such thing as Santa Claus, another jolly white man, a lie. Like, we're just making up, making up like, don't lie to your, if anything, don't lie to your children. This book, if anything, if you are an attempted black parent, do not lie to your child. In fact, that should be like part of the barometer. If I am prepared to parent a black child in a system of white supremacy, I gotta be honest, even if that means, hey, I was raped by a white man. I can't be lying to you and have you confused about this for thirteen years and all the rest of it and seeing strange black guys and thinking that this is your dad and all this other nonsense, like, confusion is lethal. Do not lie to your children. That is poison in a system of white supremacy. Santa Claus, all Easter money, all of that. Truth, that's what we need. These fanny tale, fairy tales so-called and movies and all of that, they have a huge impact on the brain, on the developing, uh, brain computer of a black child in the system of white supremacy. Let's see. She said, I tried to control my emotions because I'd seen this man come and go like the wind. She's only seen him three times unless I missed, you know, a visit here or there. I wanted to protect myself from great expectations and their attendant letdowns, but I couldn't quell my feelings. The call of one's father is nearly impossible to resist. Whatever happened to daddy's little girl? That's biology. The tackiness of all of this too, like, oh. Um. Oh, yeah, they already put, I tried to brush out my hair so it'd be straighter, bouncier hair like they wanted for the cheerleaders in Coatsville, but it was not destined to be. Hmm, hmm, hmm. The beauty con game. Pam talked to us, uh, about all of that. I mean, that's just, and that's ongoing. He mentioned the Crown Act, but I mean, that is ongoing two thousand and twenty-two and beyond system of white supremacy racism. Uh, let's see. She says, as far as I knew, I was his only child unless my mother was keeping more secrets from me. You cannot lie to your children. I mean, even, you know, some basic things like, hey, you might need an organ transplant, that might be something good to know. Did you and Strom Thurmond continue this whole tacky arrangement? If you all had another child? If I need a kidney at some point, oh, I do have a brother, he might be a compatible organ donor. That would be good to know as opposed to, oh, yeah, we have another, you have another brother or. So tacky. Sad, sad. Everything about this is just so sad. Uh, let's see. Oh, man, this is just the way that she ended this sentence. She said, those were the days, even the days before Evian bottled water was everywhere, so I bought some ginger ale and hoped that was healthy enough for the man in the High Castle. Let's see, uh, wrap it up. He says, so he comes to visit her at Harlem at her play, uh, friend's house. He says, I didn't realize how nice, and he trails off, I felt like this was, he was gonna start a Negro joke. It's about the same type of feel like, wow, I didn't realize how nice the Negroes live up here. It's like, oh, I'm with a Negro. Oh, yes, yes, yes. He got it together. He says, uh, have you been eating right, Essie Mae? Was his first question. I immediately felt bad again. Whatever happened to daddy's little girl? Girls want the approval of their father, their parents, but I think it's especially important from your dad and he's all a health nut and she's talked about struggling with her weight, which many victims of white supremacy racism, all that stress. Father hunger could be translated into eating too much or not eating enough. See. He mentions all the beef that they eat and hot dogs and pastrami and all the rest. I was like, wow, that sounds like the standard American diet. That word again, sad that everybody eats right now that will for sure kill you and diabetes and will guarantee you will not be here until a hundred eating pastrami and hot dogs and corned beef and bacon and all that she mentioned, uh, making that a daily habit for your three meals or more, guaranteed, I think. Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, the Philippines, renegade Japanese soldiers would hide in the caves just to ambush and murder. It was convinced both Japan and Germany would want to go to war again. It was a matter of time. They took their, their, their military. Japan doesn't even have a military. Like, what are you talking about? They hung Tojo? What are you talking about? Japs. Yeah, that's the one where I'm sure it was Japs, the Japs. It was not Japanese, the Japs. Anyway. Again, he didn't ask about my mother, as if he already knew. Now, now, this is not a romance. You don't ask about the help. Uh, let's see. The last one I'll get in, make sure, oh, whoa, 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 wait a minute. He says, all the whole passage about going to the Negro school, I thought of the Orange Massacre too, um, retired firefighter in Florida. Uh, but yeah, that like, she's grown up as a black person the entire time. Like, I don't know what the surprise is, I guess. Feeling some sort of rejection. Again, this is her dad through all of this, this is her dad, so feeling that sort of rejection that, oh, yeah, you know, you, you still are a Negro. Which is, of course, duh. That's what I mean about the confusion. Like, yeah, confusion is lethal. Um, the sentence she said, I lived my whole, my father saw me as a Negro, of course, and she has it in capital. The capital N, I don't do that. That does, I mean, putting a capital N on Negro, nigger, negro, none of that makes me feel any better. Whatever. Capital N, negro. I may have been half-black and half-white, that's confusion too. Remember Joanne Lucas? Uh, but the rule in the courts was a drop of blood made you black, and that's confusion too, because this is not biological and drop of blood, all that nonsense. This is total racism, white supremacy. We says use a Negro and that's that. This is not going in and doing genetic testing and whatever. This is Strom Thurmond and company. Use a Negro and that's that. Now, I'm gonna still rape your mother some more, but use a Negro. Uh, let's see. I don't know what else I was expecting. I lived my whole life as a Negro, capital N, but to hear it from my white father and a judge at that made it a brutal ruling and one with no appeal. Whatever happened to daddy's little girl? Father, ugh. That's, this is the saddest book I've ever read. Um. Oh, yeah, this is the last one, sorry. The last one I'll get in, um, she said, or last two I'll get in and then we can get to the second audio unless I missed any folks. Uh, oh, I did miss maybe one person, so I'll get in my two. One, she says, here I was in Manhattan, the progressive capital of the world. What does progressive mean? She tells us, she said, surrounded with radical ideas like interracial marriage. Wait, and I'm even pausing on that one, because I don't remember her telling us about marriages. I remember her telling us about passing where you had non-white females who could pretend they were racist white women and they could get a white man. And I heard her tell us about exotic white women with jangly jewelry with black males, artistic white women. She didn't necessarily say that they were married. They could have just been hooking up. New black male each every other month, every other day, every other week, whatever it is, but she didn't say that these were marriages. Did I miss that? Did you all hear about any interracial marriages? Cause I didn't hear that. But again, that's, the late Sidney Poitier, why is progress? Why is that so frequently? The sign that we have made progress is not President Obama, that we got a black person in the White House, but President Obama has a white mom. That's the progress. We've had, like, what are you talking about? Why is that? Ah, things are gonna be better. White people are. She didn't even name any marriages, contention. So we got interracial marriages allegedly and passing for white and homosexuality and communism? What? Why is that an environment where you have to lie and pretend to be racist to pass and ignore all your black relatives too, probably? Homosexuality? What? Why is that? Hey, this is great. As opposed to being in the South and being lynched, I'm in the middle of the LGBTQ parade. This is great. An improvement. What? Ca- I don't even know what that is, and that's a got a capital C. Communism? What? What is that? You're about to be on McCarthy's red list, by the way, too, because this is like the middle of the nineteen forties and you're talking, seeming like favorably about communism, like, ooh, wee. Talk about book banning, like, buddy, I'll turn you in myself. What was the other one I was gonna get in? She said, uh, oh, the weight. So she said, father leaves, he gives her the money, five hundred dollars, which with the inflation calculator, this would be like a cupcake less than eight thousand dollars. So no small amount of money in today's terms. Uh, so she treated herself to ginger ale, all that sugar, and some of the uneaten sweets, more sugar, and luxuriated in my friend's apartment. For the moment, I felt rich and even richer when I opened the envelope. This time it was five hundred dollars, which seemed like winning the lottery. I went shopping at Macy's and bought myself a dress. Conspicuous consumption, E. Franklin Frazier, uh, and the, the eating father hunger happens with many of us. Now, hush, let's see. The caller, oh, five two six, did you have commentary before we get to our second installment?
Greetings, guys, and everyone. Uh, yeah, this, um, this text is very, uh, can I be heard?
Absolutely.
Can I be heard? Uh, this, this text is very, um, tragic and, um, a, a, um, queer, um, for, for me at least, that, um, how, just evident of how, um, these racist rapists have, um, literally trained us non-white people to be, um, worshippers of them and their, um, silly concepts, um, such as like Santa Claus and, um, you know, just, we have been trained to want to seek out, um, fantasies they've, um, created for us that only, um, they can somewhat achieve. It's, um, very, very tragic and, um, comparing this, um, these tragic arrangements and this text are just very, very incorrect. Rape arrangement, um, to what's going on in twenty twenty-two with the whole, um, the, uh, Kajinka Brown thing and, um, what I'm seeing in, um, Area Eight and how, um, the racist men or racist women are really doing their, um, best to keep the black male and black female as far away from each other and as much conflict with each other as, as, um, possible. And this text is just, uh, wow, white people have, um, they massacred us a long time ago. We've been on a steady diet of, um, poison, poison of the mind and poison of, um, the food since, um, we have probably contacted, uh, since these people have contacted us, racist men or racist women. I may be, uh, in error and totally confused, but, um, I don't need my, I don't need my mic for, um, for now.
Much obliged. We will leave it there. So we can get to our second segment. If you have additional thoughts, jot them down. We will have time once this section concludes. So we will pick back up. This is Essie Mae Washington Williams. Dear Senator, tragic in many regards. Uh, it is recently confirmed, Katanji Brown Jackson, uh, is her name, but as I said, apparently you cannot be black on the SCOTUS and be married to someone who is classified as black. Confirmed as well. Context of white supremacy audio segment number two.
Chapter five, The Governor's Daughter. In the end, it all came down to money. I was sorry my father put the idea of Harvard into my head. I sent off for an application and was immediately intimidated by the catalog. Harvard's sister school, Radcliffe College, had photos of women who all looked like Katharine Hepburn, standing in front of ivy-covered Georgian buildings, seemingly deep in brainy discussions or doing things like lawn bowling or croquet. There were no black faces, though there was a picture of an Indian girl in Assari, who must have been related to Gandhi or someone extremely important. Adding to the intimidation were all these pictures of famous Harvard graduates, the Roosevelts, the Adamses, the Lodges, Emerson, Thoreau, Robert Frost, T. S. Eliot. Again, no black men, not even the great Debois. The application was endless and overwhelming. I hadn't taken many of the courses required to enter, especially in math and science where my high school had been weak and which I didn't care for anyway. And the tuition was far beyond my means. No wonder the girls all looked like Katharine Hepburn. They were rich, society girls, daughters of successful Harvard men, no doubt. They had to be. No one else could afford this. It was one thing if Judge Thurman was sponsoring me in some way, but after dangling the Harvard bait at me, he switched to Orangeburg. I wasn't about to write him asking for help at Harvard. That would have been totally presumptuous. I threw the application away. It made no sense for me. I read about welllessly too. Their idea of a person of color seemed to be a daughter of a Chinese emperor. I didn't bother to apply. The Columbia application was just as hopeless. There were the Roosevelts again, who had gone to law school there, and Alexander Hamilton and DeWitt Clinton and all the big names in New York's illustrious history. And Rogers and Hammerstein and Heart of Broadway and Lou Gehrig, the pride of the Yankees. There was a token dark face, like in the Harvard book, an African chief in tribal robes. Barnard College, the women's branch, seemed like a finishing school for brainy debutantes, and the tuition was out of reach. I thought about City College, which was up in Harlem, and I thought about NYU and keeping my Jane Engels job and working my way toward a degree in five or six years instead of the normal four. However, while I was thinking, my half-brother Calvin decided to move out of the city to Long Island. There went my free lodging and there went New York. Rather than looking to black schools in Pennsylvania where tuition would continue to be an issue, I followed the path of least resistance. I decided I had no better option than to accept my father's scholarship to Orangeburg, whose official name, according to its small and modest catalog, was the Colored Normal Industrial Agricultural and Mechanical College of South Carolina. Nothing on the educational earth could have seemed farther from Harvard. That my father could speak of them in the same breath was a comment on either his intense South Carolina chauvinism or an equally intense racial myopia. As long as black students weren't darkening the door of his beloved Clemson or the majestic University of South Carolina, any school they went to was just fine with him. According to the catalog, which had no pictures at all, much less of famous alumni, the school had been founded under the Moral Land Grant Act in eighteen ninety for the best education of the hand, head, and heart of South Carolina's young manhood and womanhood of the Negro race. There wasn't much Shakespeare, much history or social studies. It was an ag or agricultural school for an agricultural state, and hence, dear to my father's heart. My initial, more cynical view was that it was an institution designed to put the children and grandchildren of slaves back into the fields, albeit at a higher level. Yet the more I studied the catalog, I saw that amidst all the vocational training were some liberal arts courses, some humanities, enough to get an education, enough to be able to become a teacher and do some good. Besides, as the judge said, the price was right. I tried to enjoy my remaining months in New York until I entered college in the fall of nineteen forty-six. I felt a little like a soldier on his last shore leave, his last shore leave before shipping out for the front. Even though I was going far away to Dixie and Calvin was only going to suburban Long Island, we both felt the same way, to get it while we could. He was extremely kind to me. We went to the Apollo Theater and the Savoy Ballroom and heard Cab Calloway. Calvin took me to the Polo Grounds, not to see the Giants, but to see the Cuban Giants of the Negro League. We also went once to Yankee Stadium across the Harlem River and in the Bronx to see the Yankees get beaten by the Boston Red Sox. Ted Williams hit a home run in that game. I went to all the movies I could, both in Harlem and on Forty-Second Street, where the idea of a segregated balcony had gone the way of the back of the bus. My favorite film was The Tear Jerker, Brief Encounter, about a tragic wartime affair. It reminded me of my mother. That made me cry even more. Even though the film was set in wartime London and was about stiff, upper-lipped British people, half the audience I saw with was black women crying their eyes out. Movies were truly a color-blind phenomenon. Calvin and I went to see Ethel Merman belt out the great numbers in Annie Get Your Gun, the biggest show on Broadway. The whole city was humming those songs. My favorites were, "I've Got the Sun in the Morning and the Moon at Night" and "There's No Business Like Show Business." We went to Broadway another time to see Pearl Bailey in St. Louis Woman, a play written by two famous black writers, Arna Bontons and Countee Cullen. To see a black play on Broadway seemed a big deal. Most of the audience was white and they loved it. To think I was leaving this oasis of tolerance for the land of lynching sent me into a bit of a tailspin. I was afraid of the wilderness I was about to enter. I was having second thoughts about going south when Calvin came in with the New York Times one spring morning. "You may be a governor's daughter," he said with a big grin. Then he showed me the paper. Judge Thurman, my father, was running for the governorship of South Carolina. I read it three times to make sure they were talking about the right man. Yes, indeed, they were. He had resigned his judgeship in May and declared his candidacy. There were eleven other candidates, including the incumbent Governor Ransom Williams, whom the Times implied was the odds-on favorite. My father's main issue was his attack on something called the Barnwell Ring, a cabal dominated by a powerful Jewish politician named Sol Blatt from the small town of Barnwell, which my father was accusing of running the state for its private selfish interests. "My father," the paper said, "labeled Governor Williams as a tool of the ring." I had no idea my father was particularly interested in politics at all. I had even less an idea that he was such a firebrand. I knew nothing about South Carolina politics, or any politics for that matter, but I was so proud that my father had thrown his hat in the ring and with such gusto. My next thought was that I wouldn't be coming to Orangeburg after all, and the choice wouldn't be mine. Why would this gubernatorial candidate want to risk having a secret half-black daughter in his own backyard? I kept checking the mail, fully expecting a letter of some sorts instructing me to withdraw my application. Nothing came. I called Marion Coatsville, who knew nothing about the election. She had never voted in South Carolina and had no idea about the situation there. "He's got all the connections," she noted, reminding me, "his father elected the Pitchfork. Don't forget that." Completely up in the air about my future, I went down on the train one June Sunday to Chester to see my mother. My half-brother Willie was now in high school and was away with friends. I had my mother all to myself, which was rare. I hadn't seen her for a long while. She kissed me and held me, but she trembled and felt weak. She looked older, tired. She was thirty-six now and still had her beautiful figure, perhaps a bit skinnier, and she still walked with that swing. But I sensed a fatigue in her. She insisted she was feeling well, continuously steering the subject back to me, asking me all about New York and hanging on every word. I had long harbored this fantasy of my mother and I hitting the town together, and it hadn't happened. Now I was planning to leave and I worried about seeing her even less. I told her I had seen my father and about Orangeburg. "I know all about it," she said. "Did you see him?" I couldn't stop myself from asking. "From time to time." "Where?" I was hurt by the possibility she might have come up to New York to meet him and had not called me. "In Philadelphia," she calmed me, sensing my possessiveness in this most unpossessable situation. "The trains run every day, you know, darling." "Did you know about this governor thing?" I asked. She seemed very sad at the question. "He never talks about politics with me, darling. Did you vote?" "Not down there. None of us did. No point, really." I asked her about Sol Blatt and the Barnwell Ring. "Barnwell's just a speck on the map. Makes Edgefield look like New York," she said. "So how can they have all this power?" Carrie rubbed her fingers together in a money gesture. "That's a white man's game, Essie. We can't play. We can't even vote." She did tell me that Sol Blatt was my father's arch enemy. Blatt was the Speaker of the House of the South Carolina Legislature. Back in nineteen forty, he had tried to block my father's election as Circuit Judge, an election by the legislature or General Assembly, not the general public. Blatt had his own man, the powerful State Highway Commissioner, George Timmerman, who had been my grandfather Will Thurman's law partner. "Everybody knows everybody there at the top," Carrie said, but my father had outflanked Blatt, lobbying every member of the Assembly until he had the votes to win. "That man can turn on the charm," my mother said, "to men and women." Having been bested in the judge contest, Blatt was out to get even in the gubernatorial elections. Carrie also told me that before he had become a judge, my father had been elected a state senator. Before the Senate, he had campaigned for Edgefield County Schools Superintendent. He had won that as well. I had no idea he was such a successful politician. "He knows how to win. That's the sportsman in him. Win, win, win. He has to win, and he does. He is a highly motivated man," my mother described him. "Will he win this time?" I asked. "Honey, I don't know. It's not up to me. I expect Sol Blatt and his boys will do all they can to stop him. They hold grudges, you know. But what about me? I can't go there now." "Where did you get that idea, child?" "I don't want to spoil anything." Carrie laughed wearily. "You're not going to the newspapers. Your father's expecting you. He told me. It's a fine opportunity. Get that degree. He wants you to go. So do I." Maybe, I thought, my mother had asked the judge to take care of my education. Maybe that's why he was doing it, for her. "He cares about you, honey. He really does. Believe me." My mother must have been reading my troubled mind. "Don't let go of him. That man is going places," she said wistfully, as if she had already lost him herself. My mother told me how Strom Thurmond, even as a young man, the young man who fathered me, talked about his political aspirations. "It was in his blood," she said. Young Strom wanted to give his family the honor of being governor or senator, an honor his father should have bestowed were it not for his hot temper and the scandal of having killed a man. "He was gonna make it up to them. That was his mission." She recalled how he idolized Pitchfork Ben Tillman, treasuring autographed books Tillman had given him, quoting long passages from his eloquent speeches. I assumed he'd left out the references to killing Negroes when he orated, um, this political poetry to the woman he loved. "How do you feel about that?" I asked. "I was proud of him, proud that he cared for me," she told me, that once he started getting elected to things, he could never stop, and that she knew the juggernaut he was on would ultimately displace their relationship. "He couldn't rightly take me to Columbia," she said without bitterness, but with barely concealed regret. "It's nice how he keeps seeing me whenever he can. During the war was nice. It was like he was a free man. Nobody knew him up here." I got the impression they had seen quite a bit of each other when he was stationed in New York. Perhaps that's why I saw so little of my mother during that time. I didn't begrudge it to her, but where could it lead? "You think he'll stop?" "I don't know. If he won't see you, why would he see me?" I wondered and worried. "It's different, Essie Mae," she answered cryptically. "The man said he'd look after you, and he will. He's proud of his word. I know that." It was a sad goodbye with my mother. I didn't like crying in front of her, but I couldn't help myself. I just had this deep feeling that she loved my father so much and that he loved her, that they had happy times in Philadelphia, romantic times. I had heard the expression, "Law is a jealous mistress." I gathered politics was even more jealous. I know my father was a brave and patriotic man, but I suspected that one of the reasons he joined the army when he could have easily gotten out at his age was to be able to come north and see my mother. In the South, most men were married by the time they were twenty-one, often a lot younger. Here was my father unmarried at forty-four, which was like Methuselah back then. It was unheard of to be a bachelor that late in life. I think it was because he had a special woman in his life. A man I thought could love only one woman, and that woman for Strom Thurmond could have been my mother. The tragedy here was the hypocrisy and the secrecy. A bigger tragedy, given by father's apparently unquenchable ambitions, was that he was being forced to choose between love and career, and career was clearly going to prevail. Yet, he couldn't seem to let go of her. Was having me near him some sort of consolation prize for himself? It may have been, and the consolation for my mother was that her daughter's education, if not future, was being assured. Romantically, however, there was no such thing as second place, and I could see it in my mother's stricken expression as she said one last farewell and wished me miracles in what lay ahead. I followed the South Carolina election as best I could by reading the New York papers, which covered a little of it, and more so by going over to Times Square where they had papers from all over the country, often only a day behind. The paper from Columbia, South Carolina, The State, would have a headline about my father seemingly every day, often accompanied by his photo, speaking or shaking hands. Now I understood where that killer handshake came from. The news vendors were nice enough to let me browse. The most surprising thing I learned was that my father was described as a progressive and a disciple of Roosevelt. Those were sweet words to a black person, sweeter to a black daughter. I had assumed all southern politicians were cut out of the exact same arch-conservative racist cloth. But here was my father following in the beloved Roosevelt steps, footsteps. I knew about campaign promises being taken with less than a grain of salt, but what my father was promising was music to my ears just the same. He was advocating lots of Rooseveltian public welfare, helping the poor, the aged, children, farm and factory workers, and, believe it or not, Negroes, which is what everyone called us then, without any repercussions of political incorrectness. We didn't have enough clout to change the language. We didn't have enough clout to change the language. Whatever the name, Judge Thurman seemed to be on our side, especially in educational reforms. He talked about the state's shameful illiteracy rate, and that by elevating the status of the Negro, he was elevating the status of the state. Whenever he gave a speech about black education, I felt that he was speaking to me. "Come down here, Essie Mae, and see how well I'm going to take care of you." When I got my admission letter in the mail from Orangeburg, it was as if my father had sent it himself. From being ill at ease about this major shift in my life from North to South, I was now excited about what struck me as a potentially great adventure, a new frontier. Imagine, moving to a state where your father was so powerful? How thrilling would that be? The fantasy quickly became a reality. By August, my father had won the primary election, defeating the incumbent governor. He faced a runoff election where his runner-up, a doctor from Florence, whom my father attacked as not having supported President Roosevelt in past elections. He kept going after Soul Blatt and the Barnwell Ring, implying that every politician in the state, except for himself, was under the ring's powerful thumb. When I finally saw a picture of the ringleaders Blatt and his henchmen, Senator Edgar Brown, I realized my father could not lose. He was a media wizard. Blatt and Brown looked like identical twin villains, both bald with shaven heads, thick glasses, matching black suits and narrow ties. They reminded me of the evil Lex Luthor in the Superman comics, or a sinister version of the hairless schmooze in Little Abner. Even though my father didn't have much hair left, he looked like a youthful Adonis compared to Blatt and Brown. All a voter had to do was compare the photos, and my father would win. And he did. In the early September runoff, Strom Thurman easily defeated the doctor and became governor of South Carolina, the tenth from Edgefield. The last one had been Pitchfork Ben Tillman. Despite my grandfather's instrumentality in that racist reign, I was confident that my father, a Roosevelt man, would atone for my grandfather's racial atrocities. He was starting where it mattered, with his daughter, by having me come to Orangeburg. Thus, I went to Penn Station and got on the train heading south, not with a heavy heart, but rather a buoyant spirit of new possibilities.
That is where we will resume next Thursday. Context of White Supremacy: Dear Senator in Chapter Five. The number seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to join in. Please do not wait till the last minute if you have commentary. Uh, retired firefighter in Florida, our Skype caller, and, let's see, victim in New Jersey. Uh, I'll look for other hands as well. Folks who dialed in with a hand up, if you have additional commentary, proceed.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, retired firefighter, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, it's, uh, thank you. Uh, it's just more of, uh, a situation to where as a racist, powerful, white male seduced a victim of racism and white supremacy who worked in close proximity. That's the reason why, that's the reason why white people, especially white males, they would pick the non-white black females that would be working in the house. And a lot of them were picked due to the, uh, intense desire of the white male specifically to molest and rape them. This white male, I mean, things and things improve of the same ghastly ways over, over time, and by his time, it came to more of seduction. Uh, apparently, what I'm learning, uh, is that, uh, that is quite easy, uh, to be able to seduce a fifteen-year-old, I don't know how old she was when she, uh, came to work in the house, but fifteen is young enough, for sure. Uh, doesn't take much to be able to seduce that person and have that person committed, uh, emotionally for a lifetime, especially as a, a white, a white person, a white male in particular. Uh, and, uh, that's why with the, the, uh, uh, person that if the book is about, really can't go to her and get viable information, is because I would figure that she's under that seduction for a lifetime. Uh, also, what came to my mind through the readings is too many non-white people are satisfied with just being quote-unquote equal to white people, having what white people have, or at least what they perceive white people to have, as opposed to solving the problem of racism and white supremacy. And, uh, that is a huge problem when you are confused on what the ultimate goal or goals should be. And, uh, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Replace white supremacy with justice. Hmm. Uh, our male caller, I think he's on the Skype line. Thank you for your patience. Not hearing you? Maybe you're muted. Maybe that was caller in New Jersey.
Oh, yes, yes, that was me. Um, just real briefly, uh, I just caught on to the, uh, last, um, the last of the, uh, audio read, um, when she compared, uh, uh, her, uh, I, I, you know what? It, it's, it's struggling. I, I just need to find another term than, you know, calling him her father, you know? You know, just the, you know, the guy that was responsible for her, um, impregnating her mother, I, I say that, but she compared him to like Adonis. And I'm just, just listening to how she just kind of like, you know, fawns over her father, you know, just, just, you know, always, I mean, I don't think, this, this ain't the last time I heard, I mean, this ain't the first time I heard of her speaking how handsome he is. I've seen pictures of him. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not into men, but I do have eyes. I'm, I really wasn't that impressed, but, I mean, even when, you know, I, I, I'm just, and, 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 and it gives me just kind of like remembrance, or I have to just go back to this weird space of the internet, and you have non-black people basically, um, divesting, you know, saying that, you know, they're not into black men or not into black women, and they just, they, they basically compliment white people just for the bare minimum, you know, whether it's looks, you know, whether it's compliments, just that, that proximity of whiteness is just a hell of a drug, to use a metaphor. And unfortunately, you, you, you kind of like combine that with this being her father, you know, and just, I mean, just, you know, just being her, just being a young girl, young woman, you know, just, just wanting the acceptance of your father, that's just what makes this thing just so disgusting and tragic. But in today's society, we're arguing about amongst ourselves about the no-good black male, when the champion of deadbeat dad, or, you know, just, just sexual deviance ha- has, has been white men, you know? So it's, 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 I mean, like I said, this is a good book. So when I say it's a good book, I'm not, I'm saying good as a understanding, or just to get better context of why, um, tragic arrangements is deadly. Uh, yeah.
Much obliged, victim in New Jersey. I was, uh, cackling in the background like, "That Strom Thurman, that's a good-looking white man. You, you watch your tongue. That's a good-looking white man, Strom Thurman," sitting around here saying that, uh, she was just seduced by this old blue-eyed, uh, racist Adonis. Um, lots of times, you are correct, sir, where she has referenced how strikingly handsome Strom Thurman is in the text. Uh, let's see, other folks, if you have commentary, star six one, don't wait till the last minute. One of the folks who emailed in, uh, one of our investors, uh, wrote, "Greetings, Gus. In addition to Thomas Jefferson III, President Presidents James Madison IV and James Monroe V are also suspected of fathering black children. The book Feed Black Descendants of President Madison by victim Betty Curse is referenced in the article, uh, in the Gardisons, uh, in the Guardians." All right, you can check it out, uh, online. Uh, check that book today by Miss Curse. It seems very similar to this book, uh, like her, I think like great-great-grandmother or what have you, or like the offspring or victims of President Madison. Check it out if you like. Chapter four, number one, light-skinned, dark-skinned entertainers, Step and Fetchit, Yeeb Blake, uh, Leroy, Theodore Perry. Step and Fetchit was a vaudevilleian comedian and film actor. He was most known for his acting persona as Slow Witted, called the laziest man in the world stereotype in the movies of the nineteen twenties to thirties. Towards the end of his life, he became a friend of Malcolm X and Muhammad Ali and joined the Nation of Islam. Yeeb Blake was a vaudeville performer during the early part of the twentieth century, who was most recognized for his song, "I'm Just Wild About Harry," which was used by the presidential campaign for Harry Truman. His musical genres included initially ragtime and then jazz music. Blake lived mostly in obscurity for the latter part of his life, but received a great deal of notoriety, and his music underwent a popular revival as a Broadway play in the nineteen seventies, uh, a few years before his death at nearly one hundred years old. Wow. Number two, Nella Larson plagiarized a short story from an obscure white woman writer scandal. The short story is named Sanctuary in the Name of the Story. The work she allegedly plagiarized is Mrs. Addis by Sheila K. Smith. There are a few articles online discussing the case, and they seem to confirm that it was a case of plagiarism, but who knows, given the system of racism and white supremacy, that is true. Number three, Ethel Waters, Hazel Scott, Billy Exton, Claudette Colbert, Rosalynn Russell, Kitty Carlisle, uh, Phyllis Surf, Bennett. Uh, Waters was an actress-singer, one of the first African-Americans to star in a TV show. Late in life, she credited the evangelist Billy Graham with helping her to lose weight. She was reportedly three hundred eighty pounds and toured with him during his crusades. Scott was a virtuoso classical pianist known for playing two pianos at once. Singer, actress, married to Adam Clayton Powell Jr. She refused to take acting parts, which were demeaning, and had the first TV show hosted by an African-American in the nineteen fifties. Her career was severely hampered when she was accused of being, uh-oh, see what I said? Communist. Can't be messing around. Uh, let's see. Uh, Alicia Keys described her as an inspiration for her career. Hmm. Number four, Smalls Paradise, Cotton Club, which never admitted blacks. Count Basie, Duke Ellington, Dancing the Charleston's Riot scare the white crowd. The Charleston originated from a combination of African and Gullah culture. Its original form was performed on the streets of the Charleston, of Charleston by black children for money from suspected racists during the early nineteen hundreds. Number five, Southern Judge and Young Black Women Leaving a Harlem Apartment. Five hundred dollars. While reading about this passage about this clandestine meeting between Thurman and Essie Mae as a young attractive woman, for a fleeting moment, it crossed by my mind, is this going to lead to more incorrect sexual behavior? Eee! Of course, my fears were not borne out in the text, but it did cross my mind. How could it not? Number five, uh, chapter five, number one, The Colored Normal Industrial and Mechanical College of South Carolina, Harvard. Nothing could have seemed farther. My father spoke of them in the same breath. Intense South Carolina chauvinism, intense racial myopia. I suspect that Thurman knew Essie Mae was not going to Harvard, both because she would not be accepted and he wasn't going to pay for it. All his talk was just manipulation, which he is very skilled at, absolutely. Number two, He Joined the Army, Able to Come North and See My Mother. My father unmarried at forty-four, a man I thought could only love one woman, and that woman could have been my mother. Choose between love and career. The confusion exhibited by the author is overwhelming at times, isn't it? Isn't it? That's, this is the saddest book I've ever read. I mean, you could not have a more tragic, painful indictment of sexual intercourse between white people and non-white people in the system of racism. Number three, My Father Was Described as a Progressive and Disciple of Roosevelt. I had assumed all Southern politicians were cut from the exact same arch-conservative racist cloth. Democrat, Republican, liberal, progressive, conservative, one term includes them all, suspected racist. And that's as far as we got. Let's see, I'll get to my notes. Man, I want to see if I can get this Dr. Lewis Wright article in, not this week, before we get out of here, so let me back up to the beginning of chapter five. I've taken so many notes with this book. She starts off, she said, um, she's looking at the photographs of the colleges. There were no black faces. It's a picture of an Indian girl in a sari. Black, get back. She says she must have been related to Gandhi or someone important. Eh, uh, let's see. She said the application was endless and overwhelming and hadn't taken, I hadn't taken many of the courses required to enter, especially in math and science, where my high school had been weak and, which I didn't care for anyway. I just, number one, Varsity Blues, where they talked about the whole college admissions scandal, and they just even recently have been convicting some of the white parents who cheated on all of this. Uh, the, the applications and everything, uh, I guess were overwhelming, even though they had help and coaches and all that to come in and counsel them and fill out the applications and all this, and they still cheated. That's, you know, meritocracy, fair chance, as they say, right? And that's the ones that we know about. That's not even the people that we, uh, missed out on and/or just the white people who have all the money to bend all the rules, quote-unquote, and, you know, everything else. Uh, and to underfund the schools where the black people are, so they don't have all those AP classes and everything, so they can be really well-prepared to attend Harvard, Yale, Cornell, Stanford, wherever else. Uh, she said there was a token dark face, like in the Harvard book, an African chief in tribal robes. Bernard College, the women's branch, seemed like a finishing school for brainy debutantes, and the tuition was out of reach, like, wow. They grab an African, we have Negro students? Look at that. Bone in his nose and everything. He's in the student center every day. Wow, that's the Negro experience at Harvard. Yes, yes. Now they have, probably have President Obama with a bone in his nose. See? Negro, right here. Let's see. That my father could speak of them in the same breath as a comment on either his intense South Carolina chauvinism or an equally intense racial myopia, as long- South Carolina chauvinism or an equally intense racial myopia, as long as black students weren't darkening the door of his beloved Clemson or the majestic University of South Carolina, any school that went to, that I went to, that they went to, was just fine with him. Again, the, the sting that this is not just a white man, this is my father, you know, hey, don't you be, you know, bringing your old Negro paws around here messing up Clemson University. Jameis Winston? Clemson University? Whoops, wrong, wrong Negro, Deshaun Watson messed up my Negro quarterbacks, Deshaun Watson, Deshaun Watson. Yeah, don't be messing up old Pitchfork Ben Tillman's school here. Um, bitch, they getting half your father. Uh, let's see. And she says, "My more cynical view was that it was an institution designed to put the children and grandchildren of raped, uh, slaves back into the fields, albeit at a higher level." Uh, and she says, "Oh, there's some, you know, good, good schools and all that." One, I think it's logical, hey, if you can get an education that's quality, it's paid for it, try to take advantage anytime that you possibly can, never look down on education, but I mean, hey, yep, that does seem about right. Like, yeah, we've raped a lot of Negroes, and we certainly aren't gonna have them at Clemson or Winthrop or University of South Carolina. Go Gamecocks. Oh, Don Staley, they just won. See, see? Anyway, but yeah, we're not, you're not, you know, she wasn't even supposed to be there, you know, that's, Ben Tillman rolling over in his grave like, "Oh, my God, you let this Negro coach the team and win the championship?" Ugh! Uh, but yeah, that's not supposed to be happening, so we'll just have to put you over at the little Negro school, you know? But you make advan-, you take advantage, never look down on education. Um, she said Ted, she saw Ted Williams, uh, hit a home run, got beaten by the Red Sox. Apparently, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, spoke in favor of allowing Negroes to play in baseball and may have even, uh, hidden his own, uh, non-white lineage, but we'll have to talk about that another day. Uh, they continue, television such an enormous influence. She talks about going to the movies again. Now, we've only been in five chapters, it seems like she talks about the movies in every chapter like that. And again, there's no Netflix, there's no Hulu, there's no streaming, there's no YouTube, there's not eight billion channels. It's like two channels at this time, and the movie, probably not even two channels, 'cause you got a lot of places where they don't have a television, it's radio, and you just go to the movies. It's not like fifty even movies to watch, it'll be three maybe, two. And she's talked about the movies in every chapter. Uh, she says, uh, uh, "Both in Harlem and on Forty-second Street, where the idea of the segregated balcony had gone the way of back of the bus. My favorite film was the tear-jerker Brief Encounter. Haven't seen that one, about a tragic wartime affair. It reminded me of my mother. That made me cry even more. Even though the film was set in wartime London, when it was about stiff, upper-lipped British people, half the audience I saw it with was black women, crying their eyes out. Movies were truly a colorblind phenomenon." Confusion is lethal. And again, this is that, I mean, you wanna talk about fantasy and, and self-delusion, you're watching some sort of World War II romance about white people, a white man and a white woman, and you're seeing that as your black child mother who's being raped by a white man? Even if it's continuing like, hey, isn't that common where you have powerful white men who they have a side piece that is like their permanent side piece, like I got my wife or wives, and then this is just my, my side piece? And she might be my side piece for six years, 'cause I'm comfortable with her, you know? She's there when I need her. Trust her, she's not gonna be out talking to the press and everything. That's common, right? Am I ignorant? You all can let me know, but that's real, two thousand twenty-two, common. That's not a romance, let's not pretty that up, let's not lie to ourselves that this was his one woman, he would have married her. Are you joking? Oh, this is whatever happened to daddy's little girl. But a lot of non-white people who do not have a white parent do think this way. Been conditioned, brain trash to think this. Uh, she says, "To think I was leaving this oasis of tolerance because the black people, or excuse me, white people went to a play that was written, co-written by a county cullin', uh, I don't, I don't know what that means. Uh, I don't know who the actor, I'm sure it wasn't an all-black cast that they went to see, you know? Sure, this wasn't a long-running hit on, and I'd have to see the film, 'cause I mean, hey, if it's some anti-black content, hey, white people will come out and support the help and that sort of thing, so..." Uh, let's see. Uh, she mentions Mary, who's her pretend mother, aunt, really, she never voted in South Carolina. Psh, long legacy of that. Pitchfork Ben Tillman and folks to blame, even her father. Um, now keeping, yeah, this is white supremacy racism? Why I wanted to read the report on Dr. Lewis T. Wright, maybe I will, we have time soon, maybe. She says she looked at her mother, keep in mind now, Strom Thurmond lived until the year two thousand three. He was almost a hundred and one. She's writing about her mother in her mid-thirties. "She kissed me and held me, but she trembled and felt weak. She looked old, tired. She was thirty-six now, and she still had her beautiful figure, perhaps a bit skinnier, and she still walked with that swing, but I sensed a fatigue in her." Now that is white supremacy racism. And, hey, if Strom Thurmond, that's his side piece, he really loves her, like, hey, you okay? He, he, I'm seeing you, like, are you all right? You seem, let me get you to the doctor. Money's no. Psh. Let's, let's get you to the best doctor that we can, make sure you're straight. Did that happen? She didn't say that. I didn't hear that. Make sure you're going to get, you know, regular checkups, and this is my side piece, you know? Hmm, that's Nurse Rivers' fault, maybe. Blame that on her too? She said, uh, talking about politics, she said, "That's a white man's game, Essie. We can't play, we can't even vote." Because of men like Pitchfork Ben Tillman and Strom Thurmond. White man and white woman's, and it's not a game, that's a power dynamic. Uh, let's see, anything else? So this is her mother saying, "He cares about you," talking about Strom Thurmond, "he cares about you, honey, he really does, believe me. My mother must have been reading my troubled mind. Don't let go of him, that man is going places," she said wistfully, as if she had already lost him herself. I mean, I don't even know what you can do. Mother is dying here. Yeah, it's like you're an orphan almost, like, what can I do? This is a powerful white man. He can give me huge sums of money. He can help me get into school, so I mean, I don't wanna do that, but I mean, this racist white man, like, what? What? He doesn't even wanna be seen in public with me. I even have trouble being honest with myself about that, which, I mean, hey, whatever happened to daddy's little girl, I understand that. Um, he idolized Pitchfork Ben Tillman. She said, "Treasuring autographed books Tillman had given him, quoting long passages from his eloquent speeches, I assumed he'd left out the references to killing Negroes when orate, when orating this political poetry to the woman he loved." Confusion is lethal, what are you talking about? And even, can you imagine that? This white man is raping me, and now he's reading me? We know who Pitchfork Ben Tillman is. He's reading you the poetry of Ben Tillman, what am I supposed to say? Uh, that's nice. It rhymed. Hmm. I mean, liberal use of hmm. You gotta laugh to keep from crying, like, what in the world? Uh, she said, "I was proud of him, proud that he cared for me. She told me that once he started getting elected to things, he could never stop, and that she knew the juggernaut he was on would ultimately displace their relationship." What? Relation, ooh. "He couldn't rightly take me to Columbia," she said, "without bitterness, but with barely concealed regret." Take me to Columbia as the maid? Take me to Columbia as the side piece? Confusion is lethal. Uh, let's see, she said, "During the war was nice, it was like he was a free man," like he was, like he's enslaved, really? "Nobody knew him up here. I got the impression they had seen quite a bit of each other when he was stationed in New York. Perhaps that was why I saw so little of my mother during that time. I didn't begrudge it to her, but where could it lead?" Now, I mean, even that, now I gotta be thinking like, wow, this white man is here, and I mean, same thing would apply, that, that automatics. So he comes to New York, now she's not fifteen or whatever, but, you know, she's in her thirties, and he, hey, get over here, I'm in Philadelphia, get over here, catch the train, I'm gonna send you, could she say? Get out of here, Strom. I'm done with you messing around, I'm taking care of my child, get out, just take care of my daughter, get out. Could she say that? That, I mean, just the tackiness of all this abounds, even, like, is she the only one? That's what I'm really thinking, like, do you have, how many other half siblings do you have where he's been fooling around, like, he went to the Philippines, somebody already said that, like, hey, deadbeat white dad is international. We read Richard Bernstein, the whole world as the white man's brothel. What do we fight these wars for? Go over here and get me a little brown woman. Leave all these, call them Eurasian children, all over the place. Deadbeat white dad. Uh, let's see. Said goodbye. "Had this deep feeling that she loved my father so much and that he loved her, that they had happy times in Philadelphia, romantic times." "It was unheard of to be a bachelor that late in life. I think it was because he had a special woman in his life. A man I thought could love only one woman, and that woman for Strom Thurmond could have been my mother." I don't think so. This is a white man who married repeatedly, and he married a twenty-two-year-old when he was sixty-six. I don't think the fifteen-year-old black maid was the love of his life. That is all kinds of confusion. Uh, oh, man, we did, yeah. Anything else, I'm gonna get out, I will stop there. Um, yeah, this is easily the saddest book that I've ever read, like, no contest. Uh, anyhow, I think we nabbed all the callers. Uh, much obliged for everyone who chimed in to share, just, wow, confusion is lethal. Uh, we will be here tomorrow for Neutralizing Workplace Racism, uh, same time, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific. Compensate to recall in this weekend. Uh, hopefully, it's been worthy of your time and energy. Uh, sobriety would be best, uh, under conditions of white supremacy. We need strong minds to solve this problem. In addition to being sober, if you're out and about, you're not on the cell phone, uh, you are paying attention. If someone is being hostile and loud, exit. This is no time for confrontations with strangers. If you're in a vehicle, you are sober, buckled up, and not on your cell phone. Minimizing contact with enforcement officers as best we can. Savage beatings of black people, that's what she said at Harlem Hospital. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time. Replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.